Being 5:30, I now call to order the regular and organizational meeting of the Lake Placid Town Council this 13th day of May 2024 at 5:30 PM in the government center of the town of Lake Placid, Florida. I'd ask everybody to please make sure your phones are either off or unvibrate. And we are very pleased to have with us tonight Reverend Norris from the Lutheran Church, who is going to lead us in our invocation and pledge. So if everybody would please rise.
Let us pray. Lord Jesus Christ, as we gather here tonight for this town council meeting, we seek your divine guidance. Teach each of us to use each minute of our time wisely and effectively. Let your goodness reflect in their decisions tonight that they make here in the months ahead and in the, as the town council ponders many different things that are coming before them. In Proverbs 3, 5, and 6, you say, "Trust in the Lord with all your heart and lean not to your own understanding; in all your ways submit to him, and he will make your paths straight." With these words that's in our hearts, we humbly ask you to instill clarity within each individual gathered here this evening. We pray for fruitful and beneficial discussions this evening. Help us and help them, our council members, to stay focused on the tasks at hand facing this board and this community of Lake Placid. As we come to the end of another school year, we pray your blessings upon all the graduates that will be moving on and all the students as they break for the summer months. And we pray all these things in your most holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Norris. Okay, at this, this time I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mayor Holbrook?
Here.
Councilmember Hayes?
Here.
Councilmember Worley?
Here.
Councilmember Charles?
Here.
Councilmember Eberhart?
Here.
Okay. Now, for months, you've heard us talk about the sound system and then it's got some problems here. Well, I am pleased to say we have finally signed a, a purchase order with Bassett. They will be coming in. They're going to redo all the speaker system. It'll be a whole new mic system. So hopefully our, our speaker system here will be much better in a few short weeks. We'll now go to consent agenda one, A through F.
I'll make a motion to approve a consent agenda one.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion from the podium? Hearing none, we'll take it, the audience. All right, seeing none, bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Charles?
Here. Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
And Councilmember Eberhart?
Yes.
All right, there are no items for consent agenda two, so we'll move on. Presentations and requests to speak. First of all, we're going to have a status of the tower. We appreciate the owner being here, sir. If you would like to come up to the podium.
Just a quick note, so since this was placed on the agenda by Councilwoman Eberhart, she asked for a status of the tower. I thought since it's privately owned, it was appropriate to invite the owner of the tower, Chuck Sverk, who I've known for a number of years. Anyway, so Chuck, if you'll introduce yourself and then give us your plans.
Counsel, yes, my name is Charles Sverk. I'm the owner of the tower. I apologize in advance for probably not having something a little bit more structured or a little bit more informative. I apologize for not having something a little bit more formal, a little bit more informative to the council, but as Kevin just mentioned, so you have known him for quite some time. I've met with many of you that are up here tonight, five, six months ago, with a status of the tower in regard to, you know, what's the future of it look like? As we all know, it's been vacant for a decade or maybe better. I could bore you with a very long history on why it's vacant. I'm not sure how relevant that is, but I would like you to know that the intent is to make it a North Shiny Star again. I know it's a premier property for Lake Placid. I know a lot of people look to the tower that it's got a lot of historical value. I guess like politics, I believe the tower has a lot of opinions on it as to what it should be used for and who it belongs to. And I've been approached by many, many people about, for example, opening it back to the public. That's one thing we'd really like to consider. Part of the history that I inherited when I purchased it 15, 16 years ago, or whatever timeframe that is, is that there was a conflict with the telecom equipment being up there and open to the public at the same time for fire safety issues, ingress, egress, you know, legal, legal eyes and ears beyond my comprehension and beyond our scope that we can talk about tonight. So I'd like to speak to that. Because of that tower, it makes it a more complicated property. And Kevin and I have had this discussion several times as he's reached out to me and really impressed upon me that, you know, we'd really like to, in group spirit, see this tower restored and put back into something that would benefit not only the public but the community and, and give me an exit strategy, et cetera, et cetera. The intent, like I said, 12, 13 years ago, we had to vacate the people out of the tower. We had to live and survive their leases, so we had to wait one by one until they expired. We actually had a plan with the town to put 38,000 square feet there, knock the 1961 footprint down, and revitalize the tower and, and make it a, a North Shiny Star again. The problem is by the time that took to get all the tenants out legally, and then there was a, we worked with the town to put in a French drain in the north end of the parking lot because it's a filter to Lake Clay, the real estate market fell apart. And so that opportunity kind of opened and then it kind of closed. So where we are today is there was a lot of telecom equipment up in that tower for the last 15 or 20 years, but slowly but surely, each one of those tenants or telecom people have come to your council and found other places to go. And we are down to our last major carrier, which is what we've been handholding for the last two or three months. They are officially turned off, but decommissioning it right now as we speak. We have a meeting with them, with the engineers, to take off their final pieces of equipment here. May, uh, May 21st is the walkthrough. So we anticipate that's going to happen in the next 15 to 30 days. Why I offer and share this with you is because it has a lot of relevance as to what the future and best use for that shopping center will be. We've discussed options from renovating the shopping center as the footprint is today, but it's a 1961 footprint. And some people might call it architecturally obsolete, the center itself, of course, not the tower. So then the next conversation is what do you do with the tower? And a potential purchaser or developer for the land may or may not have interest in the tower because it doesn't necessarily foot their footprint. So one of the discussions is if we could open the tower, or is there a conversation to be had to open the tower back to the public? Which that option has come on, onto the table, or that's something that we've been discussing. What's the logistics in that? What's the legality in that? How does that coexist with the, the shopping center that may or may not be knocked down, et cetera, et cetera? So trying to find the answers to these questions and the due diligence to these questions are time consuming. So I will answer questions to that point on that if we'd like, but I would like to close and, and say this. I think in another 60 days I can come back. I'm going to take the input from what we discussed tonight or any questions I might have, and I'd like to come back. My daughter's going to have birth to a baby in about three weeks, so I probably won't be able to make your next meeting. I live up in Boston. But I would like to return to you in 60 days with more specific answers to your questions. And by that time, we will have removed the last telecom, major telecom person up there, T-Mobile, which then will put on the plate more serious options. We've already been in discussions with engineers. We've already been in discussions with, with realtors in the area. I've been approached by many people in here. Ken has helped us. Mr. Compton just reached out to us that Mr. Harris, I believe, knows, has two viable suitors for it. So I'm interested in, in finding a life for thereafter for that center, I think, just like this council is. Because as I've shared with Kevin, my goal is not to have this center sit empty for the next five, six, seven years. We have the same common goal in that because paying taxes and paying insurance and having no revenue isn't exactly a very good business person or business plan. So it's not in my best interest, believe me, to have that empty. We've had some complications. We've had some problems. We've had some break-ins. I've had some health, personal health issues. The market wasn't there before. The market seems to be revitalized. Interest rates are a little higher, but we are going to put it on the market here in weeks or months, not years. But to get the highest and best use for the town, for myself, for the community, we have to look at what our options are. Clearing the tower of the telecom to revisit the opportunity perhaps to open to the public. If I took a straw poll right now and went right down the line, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, said, should the tower be open to the public or not? I'm pretty sure we wouldn't get a, a 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. We wouldn't get a 7-0 vote. Now, there'd be some people that are in favor for it, and there's some people that wouldn't. So these are one of the things that we want to arm wrestle through. I think the tower is very significant and icon. The public, the people that have come up to me feel like it's an identity to the town and identity to their businesses. So how do we make that work? There are grants available, you know, to go up there and restore it. We've already put 40 or 50 grand into it just in the last recent months. We have a working contract on the elevator, so it's still in function. The, the telecom company, people needed it to go up and down. We're doing some maintenance on it. We're right now getting ready to, and we sent Kevin some pictures and Dana and a few others that have helped and gone through this with people literally hanging from the tower trying to paint it. So we painted the exterior walkway and we painted the underneath. And now as soon as the telecom equipment's off, which is the next few weeks, we want to paint from the platform all the way up. I reached out to the EDC. I reached out to your president of your mural company. We're open to colors or suggestions if there's something that ties into the town with it being the city of murals or, or the colors or whatever. We're not partial one way or another to what that looks like. So if I can get some direction or I can get some help, or there could be a workshop or a committee or something like that, we're happy to entertain and put the paint up there that would make most sense. Our intent is to put light back on the stalk of the tower and light it back up. We used to have the colors up around the railings for the high school color, for the high school team. They got turned off about a month ago when we started doing some maintenance up there and taking some of this telecom stuff up, but the intent is to put that back on. So we could probably spend a couple hours here on this topic tonight, which is probably not appropriate. I've probably already exceeded the window, and I know you guys have a long agenda. So I'd like to take a pause there. I'd like to take any questions that you have. I promise that I will come back if I'm so invited with answers to any questions that I'm not able to answer for you tonight. We're in a due diligence stage to, to find out what makes the most sense for the community and for myself with the property. The intent is to move it and, and improve it, and I'm sure that when it gets knocked down, we'll be in front of you again saying, hey, do you want this or can we do this or with this square footage and this parking? And there's all kinds of regulations, which is not really my, my center of expertise. So we'll be building a team and bringing people to you for that. So again, my name is Chuck Sverk. I'm the owner of the tower. I live up in the Northeast. I spend three weeks out of four weeks in, in South Florida, namely Henry County. That's where Kevin met me probably some 20 years ago. We've built a lot of homes. I want to make things pretty and shiny, just like everybody else does too. So we've worked with the city and done quite a bit of improvement to it and putting good money after bad, so to speak, because we probably all know that the tower's going to get tore down for, for any big user with what's going on across the street and with Wawa and the shopping center, et cetera, et cetera. But we want to do that and show them good faith that we're here to cooperate. So with that, I'll take a pause. I'd love to answer any questions that you have, and I promise again what I don't, can't answer for you tonight.
I just want to say, since we had our first conversation months ago, I really appreciate the effort that you've put forward so far.
Thank you.
And, you know, I think you're going to be nothing but a, a positive plus for the town. And I applaud you for what you've done, and we just look forward to working with you in the future.
I appreciate that, Mayor.
So your intent, so your intent is to take the tower down eventually?
Not, so I should be more specific about that. The tower itself, no, we don't intend to take that down.
Okay.
The shopping center that's, there's 14,000 square feet. That's a one level, call it eight or nine feet, CBS construction, old frame, et cetera, et cetera. The intent is probably to take that down, the footprint, but not the tower itself. We would like to find a owner for the tower and find a use for the tower, and there's a whole range of options that have been discussed. And I know, you know how rumors go. You start one thing, you tell one person one thing, and next thing you know, there's six people that got told and they called back. I'm like, wow, that's a new conversation. I never heard that one before.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
No, the intent is not to take the tower down. I, I think that would be a disservice to the public and the people and, and expensive. And the tower has been structurally inspected twice. It's in good sound condition. There are some cosmetic things like railings and painting and, and windows and, you know, tiny little things, but the structure itself is A1 and, and sound and will be there another 100 years.
I thank you for coming. I put it on the agenda because when Colleen and I were campaigning, we went to a lot of houses, door knocking to introduce ourselves, and over and over, people were wondering what is going to happen with the tower. They all loved the tower. They remember, they talked about going up in the tower. They talked about the shops that were down below at one time. And so I asked to have it put on the agenda so that we could give a status update to everybody who was asking us what's happening. So I really appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Well, I'm happy to be here, and again, I would like to address any questions you might have, but it's, think of it like a jigsaw puzzle, you know? We, we got to start with the edges and, and define the, the borders and then start filling it in and sort by colors. And there's a lot of due diligence and the answers that I can't, you know, solve all by myself. So what I'm trying to do is bring the right players to that and then cooperate and, and come to the town and get some direction and, and some wishes from there. But we got to have an interest and we have to have somebody with capital and we have to have a fit that would be, fit the theme of what's going on. And it's got to be economically feasible. But again, I want to just finish with, just because the center's been empty for the last 10 years, that's not my objective going forward. If somebody can convince me with an economic business argument why I want to continue doing that going forward, I'd be happy to entertain that. But it's, it's, it's painful for me too. So, so I'm here with, in good spirits and my health is good, and, and I really want to move forward with this and restore that property to what it potentially can be, which is probably one of the highlight properties on that Route Courier 27.
May I say one more thing? I wanted to really sincerely thank you, and I haven't seen you since we worked with you on the watershed project for Lake Clay. But we could not have done what we did to save Lake Clay without this man. He brought his environmental people and his engineer in. He took the north end of his parking lot and took all of the impervious surface. That's all of the, from Triangle Road all the way down to his, north end of his parking lot for the retention of all that runoff that was going straight into Lake Clay. It's not just the parking lot. It's the, all of the rooftops, all of that impervious surface. He worked with us and he spent his own money to work with us on that. So we could do the first phase to save Lake Clay from the runoff from that whole area. So thank you.
I appreciate that, Councilman. You know, not only, I'd like to add that, and that project did take a little longer than we thought, and that was the window. We had a $3 million project planned as a knockdown, like I said, of 38,000 square feet. And economically, that project got delayed and, you know, it was really no sense. We couldn't go move forward with the shopping center plan. And I think at that time, your consultant was LaRue, if my name, you know, strikes your mind.
I remember your plan for that.
And, you know, we had a good plan and we had a good idea, and unfortunately, sometimes real estate can be cyclical as we know it, and we just, we swung and missed at that opportunity. So hopefully now is a bigger, better and, and another opportunity, and we're motivated to make that happen. And again, I'm all ears. I'm not stuck in any one sense. My ego, if you will, I've always thought that piece of property was one of the most unique property I've ever had in my portfolio. I could put it on the market and get what I can get for it and just move on and say, wash my hands of it. But then I can't assure what that future person's going to do. I really do want to see that center become something special. So that's why I've kind of held on to it, and that's why I've kind of dragged my feet with it, so to speak, trying to figure that out. And that's what I'm going to do to the best of my capability with your help. Any further questions?
Thank you, sir, for being here.
Thank you very much for having me.
Mr. LeBlanc, you want to step forward?
My name's Ken LeBlanc. Yeah, I have been talking with Chuck and, and I've brought two different investor groups to town from South Florida, you know, with decent, really good money, and showed them the project to see if they would be willing to take it on. A few things. One, I've gone up the tower. The tower from the platform down is built stronger than I ever thought it was. It's very stout building. From the platform up needs to be fully renovated, and the lattice down the sides needs to be renovated. So as I looked at this project with these people, and we looked at tearing the building at the bottom down, what we would have wanted to do is build a U-shaped building at the bottom, do artificial turf in the middle, do maybe a brewery, a restaurant, shops, things like that. Some people have mentioned maybe it'd be a good place for the chamber to move, and the chamber could sell the tickets to go to the top, and, and maybe a boutique hotel on the second floor of this building would be good. So a lot of good ideas. Now, but the, you know, the main part of it was that renovating the tower at the top and putting a viewing platform, indoor air-conditioned viewing platform in a bar above that was the concept. So you'd have a restaurant at the bottom, a bar at the top. You could sell tickets. People could go up and go to the platform and they could view, or they could go up to the bar as well. And that's kind of the concept, along with this U-shaped building at the bottom, that we thought would be feasible and, and would work and would be profitable. The problem came in, when we looked at the cost of renovating the tower, it was about $3 million. So while the bottom could be built profitably, you averaging the cost of renovating the tower into the whole project, the project isn't profitable anymore. So two people that I talked to have said that they, they wouldn't be interested because it would not be a profitable project. Talking to Chuck, he had thrown out the possibility that he might be interested or willing to donate the tower, only the tower, not the land, but the tower, to an entity, whether it be the county or the town or something, and, and let them renovate it. And he would sell the land, so he would make his money by selling the property at the bottom. Somebody would take over the tower, and then there would be some kind of public-private partnership that maybe could allow this concept to happen. So, you know, some things that I've heard about is the county is selling the county's hospital. You know, they're going to bank a lot of money. They're wondering what they're going to invest that into. Is it possible that, you know, they can use money from that? He could donate the tower and they could use 3 million of their money, you know, to renovate the top of the tower and then have an agreement with the restaurant at the bottom to run a bar or something, you know, a lease. But you couldn't expect to lease it out and make it profitable for the county, you know, because it would make it unprofitable. You know, when you try and get $3 million back, right? It's, so it would have to be a public-private partnership to make this happen. But somebody has to be the one to make it happen, and I think the only one here to make that happen is probably town of Lake Placid or somebody in the county to spearhead and say, this is doable. Let's talk to the different people who would be involved. Is anybody interested? You know, because Chuck can't make it happen. I can't make it happen, you know? But if somebody who can make it happen steps up to the plate and says, okay, let's get the partners in the same room, talk and see if we can make something happen, then I think there is a project to happen here. And I think the tower, you know, I would hate to be the person who owns the tower property and have to tear that tower down after what I saw as far as the construction of that building, because it was significantly built. So, which is great, you know? But everything exposed to the elements at the top needs to be completely, you know, taken apart and rebuilt. And, you know, it's probably a $3 million project. So I think there's something that could work here, you know, if other people think so and can do this, you know? Not to say somebody won't come along as, you know, and just have a lot of money and want to spend it, but I haven't found that person yet, you know, spend it, you know, in a not profitable project. So that's it.
Thank you, Ken.
So, Mr. Mayor, just following up on, I appreciate both of the conversations that just took place, and also what Joy said, is we had a lot of feedback from the citizens on the interest of refurbishing, renovating, whatever we want to use on the actual towers, talking about the symbol, the iconic, the things that could be done, or when they were chill, you know, when they were kids, they'd go up and the restaurant and the gift shop. So how do we as a council, is this a future item we have to take on? I don't know if this is to, I'm going to address it to Mr. Mayor if it's to Kevin, because, you know, Mr. LeBlanc has just raised some good points. If there's an opportunity with the county that's going to make, you know, a sale and may need to reinvest some money, how do we as a council make the decision or not to go and try to set up the right meetings and pursue that?
That is a very good question.
I don't want to leave it on the table. I'd like to either make, make that decision or not.
Yeah, I don't know what your decision would be tonight, but maybe you might, it may be a subject for a workshop, and you come to a consensus about what you want to try and do or approach the county, and maybe we need to have that discussion, or we made it, if you want to add it into June's meeting, we'll have a continued discussion about it, and maybe we can look at options. I'm not sure, I said, that's, that's a little, I've done a lot of different things in my career. That's a little bit different than most of what I've done.
Do you know what the timing is on the sale of the hospital for the county, Mr. LeBlanc?
I think it was in the paper this morning, if you read it online, I think. And I, I think they're moving along maybe even quicker than that.
Yeah, I would, I, I'm concerned on delaying it another month for workshop or another month when all of a sudden things, other people may be getting in on trying to determine how they could have that funding coming their way. You know, I appreciate that in a couple months, he's going to come back after he has his grandchild to give us maybe an update there. You know, how do we contact Leah who does that to try to gain an interest so at a minimal the next town meeting, we can have an update if we can get, you know, in the ground on seeking some funds?
I can give you that update now if you'd like.
Go ahead.
The state of Florida has...
In the microphone?
The state of Florida has adopted Chapter 155, I believe it is, that says how that money will be spent, and it's very restrictive on the county commission. I don't think a tower would fit into that at all.
But we can ask, right? So the commission, the county commission?
I'm very familiar with that law. You certainly can ask the county commission anything, but that money, I don't see would have a chance. Maybe tourist development money? Because you, you got that on your list. And say, we want tourist money and fix the tower. That's a better fit. But the hospital money will go to healthcare. That's just what the law says.
So the, the county connection is the money, right? To see if they would allow us the money to, to buy the tower? Is that what you're saying? Because I'm confused with the county connection.
I think that's what Mr. LeBlanc had said, you know, there's an option that they're going to be selling the hospital.
Right, this I know.
And then where, where will they reinvest those funds?
I see.
Typically, there's, you know, call it, when it was capital gains and things like that, where they're going to invest them. And so the, the question is, and I think he said Leah, is who can we talk to to see is there an opportunity for any of those funds to come our way? Now, and I, I appreciate Mr. Harris's comment and...
I'm the attorney for the hospital board.
Ah. Yeah. But I, I still, yeah. No, I didn't mean, I didn't mean it like that. No disrespect. I meant your feedback. But I would, you, you can get told no if you ask. You can't get no, told no if you don't ask. So any money that we could try to find, whether it's grants, whether it's TDC, I'd like to figure out how we can pursue those.
I, I think the TDC has a lot better funding for that and a better connection for that. I think it would be easier to make a case through the TDC, and they're always looking for projects. So I think that might work out well. So we'll see. But I, I don't, I, I really don't think that people are clamoring to purchase it right at this point. Maybe the property, but not the tower itself. Am I mistaken with that, Chuck? Mr. Chuck?
I'm sorry?
I'm not, I'm not thinking that people are clamoring to purchase the tower. I'm not, I'm not thinking that people are clamoring to purchase the tower, am I mistaken with that?
Most people that have inquired about want to get it all, because especially if they get it discounted or something. And when it had the telecom equipment to it, I had offers as much as 2 and 3 million dollars just for the tower because of the cap rate investment from the telecom equipment. But now that that's gone, the desire for those people, it's, it's diminished considerably. And, and I think to Ken's point, you know, you can go from a Volkswagen to a Rolls-Royce. The concept of putting a bar up or something 200 feet in the air and redoing the entire top, when you have a limited footprint of whatever that might be, to get something that would be self-sustaining and, and to be able to pay for itself or pay back an investment, is probably more the limiting factor than what utility you would use. But, if you were to restore it to just going back in the elevator shaft, which is very strong, and the elevator could be just upgraded, and just put a platform where people will go up there just to see the views and take pictures, or put a live video cam up there where people could tour and see or something like that, this is a very reasonable cost. And, and it wouldn't be much to maintain. And then maybe you take your footprint down below with your EDC, or tourism, or something like that, where people can go up, and it's not so much even about selling the tickets, you wouldn't need much revenue to do that. But if you were to make it a bar, for example, like Ken was talking about, or a restaurant, you know, 2 or 3 million dollar investment to the top, if it could be engineered, if it could be done, you run into a lot of complications. To get an ROI back on that, probably very difficult. But, to sell the land for somebody to want it without the tower, it would go under contract probably within 30 days, or 60 days. So, we don't want to leave the redheaded stepchild at the altar all by herself, we want to figure out what we'd want the, the, the future of the tower to be, and you only have one opportunity to, to marry it with that center or not marry it. So, if you would carve out the center, for example, or the tower, and give, I don't know, 5 or 10-foot egress around it, give it ingress, egress to the back street, and allow people from the center to use it, or to, to go up in it or whatever, that's probably the most economically feasible, because that doesn't take a big investment. But if you tie it to that, then there could be like a big box store, or a big restaurant that would, would come in, and some of the things you'd really want as a town, and that big corporation say, "Look, that doesn't check our boxes, we, we don't want a 220-foot tourism tower in our package, because we don't want to maintain it, we don't want the liability, et cetera, et cetera." That's where it gets complex. Look, if, if this tower didn't exist, which is why we're all here discussing it tonight, it's just another piece of commercial property that's 2 acres, and, and, you know, there's lots of fits for that, and lots of needs for that. Trying to marry it with something that is, is consistent with that tower, or protect that tower, or then open it back to the public, is a little bit more of the thinking power. And, and that's maybe where we could have some committees or workshops or talk about or something like that. But, I agree with you, you know, time is of the essence, because once we sell the property off, if I partition that off and just sell that, then it's kind of stuck by itself, and this is kind of why I've dragged my feet with it, because I, I really want to make a joint decision, what makes sense for, for both parcels, or, or both pieces, so to speak.
Ken, one question for you. I, I don't know if you can give the numbers or not, but let's say the tower was carved off by itself. What is the estimated insurance and maintenance cost, just to sustain it, without making any profit?
Just from liability or whatever, it's currently insured for that right now, it's, it's nominal, it's 4,000, 5,000 dollars a year. It's not a lot. Now, if you add use to it where people go up there and potentially, again, this is above my pay grade and, and before my time, but, you know, I know for a fact that people in the past had snuck up there with the parachute and jumped off it, and, and glide down, and I understand there's also somebody that, that decided to end, end their life with their poodle that jumped off it, so the rumor goes, before my time or whatever. So, when you start adding those things that are open to the public, of course, I think the insurance would probably go up, but I don't think the liability part of it is, is great.
So, so all, all costs, maintenance, insurance, and so on and so forth, is like in the ballpark, what, 15,000 a year?
Uh, the, the elevator maintenance contract might run you that all by itself.
Okay.
So, with insurance or whatever, it's hard to say, but if you ask me, just wag and take a number out of things, I'm gonna say probably, probably more in the 35 to 50,000 dollar a year range, just guessing.
Okay.
And your tourism, to, to bring people up and let them go up there for 10 dollars or something like that, that, that could easily pay for itself. But I think you want the foundation to work that from the floor, or the ground of the retail center. So, if you, let's say you built 25,000 square feet as a center there, or, I think we did the calculations with, with Kevin and Dana before, that it could potentially be up to 45,000 square feet. If you took 3,000 square foot bay and ran your tourism out of it or something like that, and then made it to, or was close to the proximity of where that, to the elevator would go or whatever, that's probably very easy to maintain, because you're not manning it with an extra person, you're, you're not doing really anything other than maintaining the elevator, and, you know, perimeter fencing, or perimeter guardrails, et cetera, et cetera, cameras or whatever. I mean, maybe you want volunteers or whatever, somebody to go up with them, just so you say, "Johnny, don't crawl up on that," or, you know, again, above my pay grade, but I'm sure it could be thought out. But, I think to make it full-blown and put it into a commercial establishment, where you're trying to serve plates or dinners up there, or something like that, I think, not that I don't think that's not a great idea, I do think it's a good idea, but I think that's a harder cost business model to justify.
Okay, no, I, I was just thinking, if it was just like a, just, there as an icon, not with the restaurant and the bar, just the icon and the elevator, just a ballpark, just a, you know, off-
If it were just for scenic, and put colors on it with the town, or murals, or with lights and stuff like that, just to make the symbol like a lighthouse, let's say, coming into a port at sea, right? I, I don't think the maintenance on that would be more than 20 or 25,000 dollars a year, to, to just, but, nobody goes up, nobody comes down, other than maintenance, not open to the public. Opening to the public, it's a whole new can of worms that, you know, hey, I wouldn't even want to pretend to come up here and tell you that, oh, it'd be this, this, and this, because I'd be fuming to you. Again, as Kevin said, I've done a lot of things in my life, but not run a business model of that nature.
Thank you.
I was just gonna say, um, just a quick comment, I'll be happy to bring back some estimated costs of just the tower. If I can get insurance costs, liability costs, you're gonna add a labor cost for a person somewhere in there, just because you're gonna have to keep track of who's up on top and what's happening, but, um, but we can come back with some of those costs, bring it back to the next meeting, and further discuss, and see where we go from there, unless there's some other workshop or something you want to schedule in between.
Sounds good.
Everybody knows me, my name is Donna Davis. If he donates it to the town, can the town do a fundraiser?
Do what?
Can the town do a fundraiser? If he donates it to the town?
If he donates the tower to the town, keep it a local town, tower instead of a county tower, can we do a fundraiser, a town fundraiser, and raise the money for it?
I don't, yeah, I'm sure, I mean, it would, it would have, there's a, there's a multitude of things you can do, I mean, yeah, that's an option. There, there'd probably be a lot of details that would have to be worked out, you know, who's gonna, who's gonna manage it? You, you, you know, I mean, I guess we're open to anything at this point.
I've never pursued it, but I did find online, and four or five people have forwarded it to me or whatever, there is a grant available that would be specifically available for this, up to a half a million dollars, but it has to be sponsored or initiated, or, or the, the grant has to be requested by a governmental agency. No details on it, I never looked into it, I'm not a government, so therefore it didn't apply, but I, I know that that exists out there. How to qualify for it, and whether that makes sense, again, another topic for conversation.
Yeah, thank you. If anybody comes up with any ideas, I mean, don't, don't be afraid to bring them to us. I think that's what we're looking for, is, especially after all the comments, is, you know, what can we do and what can't we do? So, but again, Chuck, thank you for, for being here. I look to seeing you in, what, 60 days? Okay. That's right, okay.
So, Kevin, are you able to look to see where grants might be available? Because it, it sounds like there's a number of the things, right? If there's grants available, TDC money that might be available, fundraiser, maybe there's even private donate, donors that, you know, would contribute to get this icon back up and running, so, will you be lead to this one?
Yeah, absolutely, actually, that's where Dana's and I, Dana's first conversation with me on about the tower was about what grants are available. So, uh, that goes back a long ways, historic preservation grants come with a lot of strings, so I'll find out about that, but I'll also caution you. I do have experience on two different facilities that have used historic preservation grants, so we'll see what's out there, what's available, and, and come back with as much information we can in the next 30 days, and then moving forward.
I just want to make a quick comment, that I know that even when I, when it was closed, and I took Swift Mud people up there to show it to them, it's hard to get people even down from up there, that'd be the hard thing, getting them down. You can see all the way to the north end of Estepoga, you can see all the way to 98 on a good day. I mean, it's just fascinating.
It's amazing.
I thi, I think that at the time, and Chuck was kind enough, I said, "If you, would you donate to a foundation if we took the responsibility for it?" And he was even considering that back then. But now that the, the electronics are gone, that's, makes it more feasible, but I was thinking, even if we just put out, like, if you want to go up in the tower and you want to get it restored, you're gonna have to donate now first, because I think people would do that. I think they would just give the money to try to get it restored, so they could go up in it again, because it's beautiful.
All right, any other comments? All right, we'll move on to number four, organizational town council. Yeah?
I guess the first one is the election of the vice mayor, so that's gonna be council discussion, actually several of the next ones.
I'll make a motion that Joy Eberhart be nominated as the vice mayor. Joy's been on the regional utility advisory meeting for 12, 15 years, I think she'd be an excellent vice mayor.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Okay, lacking a second, I guess we move on.
I've been asked to do this, this task, and I do have a lot of experience, it wasn't something that I was seeking, but I do have a lot of experience, and I do know all the staff members and the directors, and I do, for the time being, I think I would be a good fit to step in and do it for now, anyway. So, I would nominate myself.
I'll second.
Okay, so what is it again? Oh, she's-
I'm nominated, myself.
Okay. All right, we have a nomination and a second. Any other discussion? Clerk, poll the council.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Eberhart?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Thank you.
A second item is the, uh, councilmember Eberhart was on the utilities, Lake Placid Regional Utilities Advisory Commission. So, she is, oh, that's, I'm sorry. Councilmember Sapp was the council liaison to the Lake Placid Regional Utilities Advisory Commission, so we need a council member to fill that spot as the liaison.
I nominate, uh, councilmember Joy Eberhart.
I'd second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Clerk, I ask you to poll the council.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Eberhart?
Yes.
Okay, uh, third item is the tourist development, development council. Councilmember Charles Wilson had the, was on that term, that's a representation that flip-flops between Avon Park and Lake Placid. We have two years left on our term, so we need a council member to be the representative on the tourist development council.
Considering that Deborah Worley is familiar with the tourist development council, you've been on it, correct? I would nominate Deborah Worley.
I'd like to be considered for that as well, with my experience in golf, and having worked with the tourist development council before, I would like to take that as well.
All right, well, we had, we had a motion, right? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Clerk, poll the council, please.
Councilmember Eberhart?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Nope.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
The fourth one is the Highlands, Highland County Recreation Board, ARPAQ. That one has, currently is served by Harry Durbanow, who's, um, his term expires actually in July, but his last meeting will be May 15th coming up, the next meeting is August. So, we can either have a council representative, or myself, whichever the council prefers, serve on the ARPAQ board, so.
I'll make a motion that our town administrator take that position.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I think Kevin has so much going on right now, um, it should probably be somebody else.
We have a vice mayor and a TDC on the same person, I think Kevin can handle it.
I'm sorry, what? I didn't understand.
You're, you're on, you're gonna be on TDC and the vice mayor, so I don't think that's gonna be any more overload on Kevin's position than it is on, on your personal time.
Well, who, so, I mean, I don't know, it is a big position, and like Mr. Brantley said, it holds a lot of money with it. Mr. McCarty, what do you think? Would you like to do it?
He's already said he would, yeah.
I'm, whatever the council chooses, I just put my name, so it's an option for the council. We had a staff member before that was a board member. You actually have two board members to elect on that one, but the second one doesn't happen until December with Eva, so, it's whatever the council, I'm fine either way.
Okay, if, if you're, if you're fine with doing some more work, go ahead.
I'm sorry, it's a quarterly meeting, so it's not, it's not a lot of work in between, so.
All right, poll the council, please.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Eberhart?
Yes.
Okay, that takes care of that section, there are no public hearings, so we'll go to number six, resolutions. Resolution 2024-12 of the Lake Placid Town Council regarding the voluntary annexation of lands owned by LeBait Holdings, comma, LLC.
So, if anybody needs any background on this, this is LeBait Holdings is the property adjacent to the property that Dollar General is gonna go on, between the Lake Henry Drives. So, it's voluntary annexation that he's requested to be annexed into the town limits.
It's just north of the American Legion, it's that parcel that's being developed, North American Legion on the opposite end, north of that parcel there. I make a motion to accept and pass Resolution 2024-12. I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and the comments from the podium. Okay, hearing none, we'll take it to the audience. Seeing none, bring it back, poll the council.
Who did the second, I didn't hear?
I think it was.
Did you do the second?
I seconded.
It was Nell.
It was Nell. Sorry. Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Eberhart?
Yes.
Okay, now we'll go to number seven.
Okay, let me pull up, this is.
I don't think we have anything there, do we? At this point? Oh, seven A, there we go. All right, mayor, council member agenda items. I see the first one is council member Charles. You had citizen feedback?
Getting choked up over this. So I, at the last meeting, I said I wanted to come and just give a brief overview of a lot of the citizen feedback when Joy and I ran for council member positions. And so I'm going to go through it pretty fast. And I don't want anybody to walk away to say we're recommending any of these ideas, but I think that with the upcoming budget and things that we want to do, this is just feedback from our citizens on things that they would like. So we visited, we talked to over five hundred people, and this is kind of a culmination of a lot of the feedback from them. The major themes were communication, recreation, youth and family ideas, infrastructure, and miscellaneous. Under the communication is respectful discussions and transparency, professional responses to the public. A lot of people don't know about the meetings and events, and I know we've had discussion while it's on the town website. And Eva now has set up Nextdoor, and I think that's excellent. And I know she's working on a Facebook. A lot of towns, and I use Clueston because that's where Kevin came from, so he can help us on a lot of that, but Clueston has a town Facebook site. We have a Lake Placid Life Facebook site, but that has a lot of information in it outside of town. So I think that we can really communicate a lot, you know, call it fundraisers that you brought up that might be needed or other needs that we have along with meetings to our public. A lot of it was that all the public meetings should be streamed, recorded, and posted. I know this meeting is. I don't know if the other ones are, like the LPA meeting, the regional utilities and that, so something that, you know, people want to learn more about the town and they do want to participate. I think we have an opportunity for a lot of volunteers out there if they knew what we needed them to volunteer. Recreation was a lot, you know, we need more youth and family activities. Came up a lot, a splash pad or park, you know, not a water park, but just a splash pad or park, a dog park with benches and shade, community pool. Now, that's a huge one, and don't walk away saying we're recommending a community pool, but it did come up over and over. People want the bowling alley back and again, and the roller skating rink, but a lot of this, as we explained, it wouldn't be the town doing it. It would be, you know, investors or developers that would come in, and if there's a need for return for them, I'm certain that they would do something like that. A lot of the seniors wanted activities. They're willing to volunteer, they're willing to tutor, they're willing to give different type of lessons. So they, they actually have a lot of time on their hand that they want things to do and they'd be glad to volunteer. The barbecue grills at the park need to be replaced. And, and a lot was who do we report issues to? If we see fire ants on the playground or different potholes or different, you know, maintenance needs, there's a lot of confusion on who you report things to. And I think with, you know, Facebook sites and just sometimes just publishing, you know, I mean, everything can be called to the town. But lots of times it's break it down, who in the town can I call to or send an email to that, that, you know, would bring to the attention, things that can make the town better. The question that came over and over is do we need a recreation department? And I guess years ago, we had a recreation department or we had at least a recreation committee. So different times, people would come up with ideas for advisory committees that could really help with some of the ideas that might be worth pursuing. The youth and family ideas were a lot. People come from different areas or where their children or grandchildren are, and they were throwing out some pretty unique and fun ideas, like a bike rodeo, a bike parade, a dog parade. A lot of people wanted to take advantage of Devane Park and maybe have music in the park on a Friday night with, you know, food trucks or karaoke talent shows. People told us about these park run events that, to get people, especially the youth, out for exercise and that. Every Saturday, they would have this park run and that you would, you would, you know, get a card and you'd basically note that you attended. And after so many attendance, they'd give some type of small recognition to the kids and even a community garden. Next chart is on infrastructure. A lot of good feedback on building on the success of the Journal Plaza. And, you know, how much fun, how beautiful it is, and they'd like to see more restaurants and shops in the downtown area. We talked about it early, a lot of interest on renovating the tower and the area around it. Comments that the sidewalks and the curbs need cleaning and, you know, dead plants and flowers refreshed, and we talked about that earlier. Next chart is, there is an interest on affordable and safe housing. And we, we had a lot of single parents that talked about their interest there. Different ideas on transportation options, a bus, a little trolley around town, especially, you know, talk about five, ten years in the future if the historic area is built out more. Lot came up about local job opportunities. People are interested in, in more job opportunities. And then smart growth. They don't want to open, populate the area to bring traffic congestion, accidents and crime, and they don't want big box stores downtown. So under the miscellaneous, we should be pursuing more grants. A lot of people on the Twenty-seven Corridor expressed interest in a no-jake-brake ordinance, which I didn't know what it meant, but I found out later, that's the big trucks. The new police station needs to be downtown. Nobody was saying they didn't support a new police station. It's just the location that is the concern of a lot, and I know we're going to talk about that later. There were questions on the pickleball courts, where the location is, the size of it, the priority and the rationale, and that CRA changes for membership and type of spending should be expanded beyond just infrastructure. They felt that there's multiple solutions that are needed to improve the lakes and how do we get workshop meetings with DEP, Swift Mud, Fish and Wildlife, you know, all of the different stakeholders that have some type of input and budgets to improving the lakes and the canals. A lot of interest to support our small businesses, to help support and grow them. Another interesting one is that only elected officials should sit on the dais or at least the council members be more clustered together. And that, here we go, Kevin, the chamber sound system is horrible. A lot of people just stop coming to the meetings because they don't, they can't hear and don't understand. Everybody loves our small quaint town. They don't want the big box stores in the historic downtown area. And there's a lot of support, volunteer groups or special teams, advisory groups on some of the things that, even the earlier recreational items that people are interested in helping with. And then no one ever came to the door to ask for their feedback and ideas, so they thanked us a lot on that. And, and I know that they thank us just bringing it forward to share to the council. This is the voice of the public. These are the Lake Placid and some of the surrounding areas' feedback. Oh, next steps. As a business person, there's always that next step chart. So what I threw together is proactive changes. Maybe we poll the public for more feedback and town improvements. We then prioritize in immediate, short and long-term actions. You know, I always say it's like your five-year business plan, your ten-year, your fifteen. How do you want to see this town in fifteen years? How do you want to see Lake June Park in, you know, ten years? Assign ownership, and you heard me saying that earlier, who's going to own this item? Because if not, it's like any meeting, we discuss it and we walk away and nothing happens. So I'm big on ownership. Where applicable, including a lot of community volunteers. We have somebody who's already come forward in setting up soccer. And I just can't thank this person enough. They, they've set up their own Facebook site. They have sixty kids already signed up with their interest in getting the soccer program back up and running in this town. And that's just, and that's with their short communication. We could help communicate that a lot broader. Investigate grant and funding opportunities and determine any future budget impacts. I think with us, the budget coming up and another couple of months to work on, the timing's good on some of these items is how do we work that into the budget? Hold public workshops. I think the workshop we had earlier, Kevin, was excellent. And so maybe we have workshops on some of these specific areas to see who we can get volunteers and for any further feedback. And then, of course, give periodic status updates. If not, it just falls in the hole and we never follow up on it. I felt this mic was kicking back at me, so back to the horrible sound system, Kevin. Any comments?
Yeah, it was, when. Now I'm doing it. When we were going door to door, we didn't do the usual thing and just introduce ourselves. We made a point of asking everybody, asking people, what do you see, what's lacking, what, what do we need? And that's where all these things came from. And over and over again, is there is nothing for the kids to do, nothing for the little kids to do, the intermediate teenagers, the young adults, they travel out of town for their, their partying, and then they drive home and end up in an accident. So I think that, I think you covered everything. And the other thing is that people remember how nice the downtown looked at one time with the plantings, and they really want that to come back.
Thank you. That was very informational. I wondered what you all talked about when you went around.
I think the, the information is, is very good, and I'm, I'm glad to hear a lot of it. I wonder where these people were when the bowling alley was open. I wonder where these people were when the skating rink was open because they closed because nobody came. So I would, I would think that in order to make a case to reopen these places, we would have to show that there's something different in our environment that would now make these things successful. And some sort of a marketing plan or something that people could, could say, okay, now the, the demographics have changed or the ideas of the people have changed and now this could be successful now, because it was not successful in the past. So repeating the same mistakes, you know, doesn't seem to make sense. But I still understand, and it's a, it's a countywide problem, that people say there's nothing for the kids to do. Well, there is. I mean, if you, if you go down the parkway and you look towards Sebring High School, you see a ton of kids out there playing baseball or softball or soccer, or depending on the season. There's, there's a lot for them to do, but, you know, it, it takes parental involvement for the kids to do it as well. But I think the soccer idea is great. I'm sure there's probably room for baseball and softball as well. So, you know, a lot of these things we, we can do and we can't address, so.
Oh, one thing I just remembered, I also remembered is that we talked to a lot of Hispanic-speaking people. We took a translator with us, and they feel neglected. For example, with the utility, paying their utility bill. Or I, do they just feel like they're left out? So if, and some of them suggested having in their little communities maybe translation services or, I don't even know how to set it up, but it was just an impression that I got talking to people.
Who were you saying feels neglected?
Pardon?
Who did you say feels neglected?
The Hispanic, Hispanic community.
Okay.
I think that's a valid concern too. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of Hispanic folks that come down to Lake June Park and that area on the weekends. But, but yeah, I can certainly see that, yeah.
And we'll just make one comment on that. Our custodian here at Town Hall is Hispanic, and he does a lot of translating for people that need, that come in when they want to pay their bills or they have a question, and he, they pull him in and, and do provide that service. But we do only have one Hispanic speaker, so.
Any other comments from, anybody? Come forward, state your name, please.
Sharon Hudson, I've lived here since nineteen fifty-nine. I've been a business in town several times and in the county. I now have the Purple Irish Tea Room in town. I've asked several times for feedback from the town for over a year for what about the planters in town? They're looking sad. What plants can I put in the one out front because it needs some attention? Nobody got back to me. I've been to the town several times, asking what our signage is. I think that our town or our committee here, you do not support the local businesses in town. You do not. You hinder us when we're trying to run a business. You don't let us put up proper signage. And if we ask for that information, it takes a year to get it. It's now, Inner Lake Boulevard is desolate. The medium, the planting is not done on a properly basis. It took me a year to get somebody to cut down that palm tree that was dying. There's a palmetto bush in the middle of my parking lot there on Inner Lake. A car can't park here and it can't park here because that is a palmetto bush, bird, not a palm tree. So we need to take care of that. But we need to pay attention to the local businesses that are struggling to stay alive. And I used to be so upset when people would say, well, the northerners are going back or the northerners will be here in November. We don't need the northern people to support us. We are a small community and we need to shop Lake Placid first. But in order to do that, our town council needs to help support us in the summertime and in the wintertime. That's all I have to say. Thank you. Just pay more attention to local businesses.
You know, years ago, Mr. Brown had a business, what do you call it?
Merchant Association?
Business Association.
Merchant Association of Businesses.
Merchant Association.
We're working on that.
Yeah, and that, that would be very beneficial, not only for the, the businesses, but for us. Because I personally have never gotten any of that feedback.
Well, I've been in this room numerous times.
You know, I'm, I'm not saying you haven't. I'm just saying it's, personally, it's never come to me. But I, I would like to see the businesses get more proactive and, you know, like you said.
We're working on a merchant association is what we're going to call it.
Start a merchants' association that we can work with.
But I think that we need to be in on a lot of the things that are going on here at the town council.
I, I think a lot of these issues could be resolved if, if we had the communications between the businesses and us. So, yeah, it works both ways.
I've been communicating for over a year, mayor.
Well, you, you say that, but I have not heard it personally.
You may not have, but I know these others have. Okay? Thank you, folks.
I appreciate you.
Ken LeBlanc. You know, with what she was saying, if we have a strong CRA board and, you know, agency, I think, if you think of Sebring, nobody downtown Sebring complains that Sebring doesn't try because of the CRA. The CRA tries really hard and has tried really hard for years and made a lot of great progress over the years. And now they've made incredible progress, you know, with the Home and Garden Television thing they're doing. But I think if we can build our CRA and have a board on the CRA that is not just the town council, then I think we can strengthen the CRA and then people in the community will have a lot more interaction and that kind of thing. You know, and if we just look at how Sebring does their CRA and their CRA board, they do an incredible job. And so I, I think that, that could help with what she's talking about.
And I don't disagree with that. Our CAA is still relatively new. So it's, we're, we're, we're going through a lot of growing pains with it. And, you know, hopefully one of these days we can, we can be up and running and do like Sebring's doing. But, and I know some of the comments that were made will, will maybe help benefit that in some ways. But, yeah, I, I agree with what you're saying. No, just.
I think one of the things we need to realize, too, is that, that Lake Placid has more than one Main Street. It's not just Main Street, it's Interlake as well. And some of the businesses that are in, on Interlake have been there since heaven knows I've been here, and Sherion's been here, and some of you folks that have lived here a long time, and seeing Pam's knocking her head over here. But Interlake is, is very critical to getting people off of 27 and, and into our town. And I think Main Street Development has done a great job, and Ken's done a great job as well, but we do have Interlake as well. We can't, we can't ignore those merchants.
Yeah, and if I can say, I agree 100% with you. Interlake, you know, needs a revitalization effort. You know, what's happened on Main Street, the Journal Plaza, has happened, you know, because I've taken my money and done it, but I don't have enough money to, to do Interlake and everything else, you know? But I, you know, there's ideas, and if people with money, you know, get the ideas, then they can do it, you know? So the CRA, in large part, can create visions, and they can put the vision out there, then other investors can come along and buy property and renovate it and, and become part of the revitalization effort. So if you have a master vision for revitalization, and multiple partners working it all at the same time, but working from the same playbook, you can revitalize an entire town. You know, you know, that's, if you just go to Mount Dora and places like that, you know, that have been revitalized, the entire thing is revitalized, you know? And it's just, you know, if you go to Mount Dora, you'll see there's about three major landowners downtown, you know, that own the properties that are, have really made the revitalization effort happen. So, you know, and it's just a vision. You gotta, you know, and the CRA, you know, their job is to create the vision and put the vision out there, right? So I think a strong CRA can help, you know, revitalize Interlake as well, right? Yeah.
I think the other thing that's helpful, and it gets back to communication, it, it does trouble me that for a year, you know, one of our business owners has had concerns in her mind, and it's real, it, it hasn't been addressed. So, you know, on our town website, it has who the town council members are, but what it doesn't have is how to contact us. So maybe we should be putting our email underneath to give more accessibility when you do see issues, because I'll tell you, if somebody writes to me, and I don't want everybody to write to me, I want you to write to Nell.
I want you to write to Colleen.
I follow up. I mean, I'll send it probably on to Kevin, right? He's going to get them, but then I will follow up, what is the status and that? And so I think that we can make ourselves more accessible for feedback also from the business owners and from the public on what are some of the things that we should be working on to help improve our wonderful town and surrounding area.
And we'll just make one comment, that specifically, because that was what Bill Brantley was talking about, Keep Lake Placid Beautiful on that Interlake and the plant list, which they have recently, that was actually discussed at the last Keep Lake Placid Beautiful meeting, on that plant list, because that's kind of their side of that, not the town's side of that. So they do have that list now, as of a week or so ago, a plant list for that. So that may be a contact, if you have, with Jennifer Bush back on the chamber, she may be able to give you that answer.
Got it.
You got it, okay.
Okay. Want to go to number two?
Number two is Lake Placid Community Redevelopment Agency, that was at the request of Councilmember Everhart, so I'll let her take the lead on that one.
Oh, right, okay. So I guess for those that don't know, CRA is Community Redevelopment Agency, and it's funded by, make sure I got this right, when it was formed, it was a certain tax, real estate tax base, and every year after that, as the real estate taxes go up, a portion of that is funded, transferred to the CRA to spend. Currently, or in the past, currently, the CRA is comprised entirely of the board members, and what I would like to do is, we're allowed to add two more members, I would like to add two more from the community who have expertise in redevelopment. So I think the first thing is to make a motion, if I can, that we add two more positions to the CRA from, from the community.
I'll second that.
You'll need to amend the CRA ordinance?
No, Ashley, it's in the ordinance, they're allowed up to seven people.
My apologies. I'll go read the ordinance again, but...
It's, it's up to seven people, two of which may be from the community.
If you've read it recently, I defer.
I think it was in our packet, I think it's in our packet.
I've read it, too. It is there.
You can bring it up.
One, two...
Sorry, I did not remember the ordinance saying that.
Okay. Go back. It is...
Two.
Okay, not line, yeah, line item two?
There.
Last paragraph, the last sentence.
Okay. I had, I've been thinking about this ever since when you were, we talked before you were elected. You know, I was, worked hard for to get the CRA, and we're doing fairly well now. But it did dawn on me that CRA money is tax dollars. It's the tax dollars that the town people pay into, in our, in the CRA is an area. So in that, in that area, the people that are paying the taxes have actually paid the increase in taxes, not the business owners, but the actual people that own the buildings. So the taxpayers pay it. Then, in addition to that, not just the town tax dollars come back in, but also the county taxes increases, we get that, too. So we not just get our increase in tax dollars, we get everything that the county's paying in extra since that line in the sand, we get all their money, too. So it's really tax dollars. So the only thing I would say, I don't know if we should add one or two, I would say for sure, maybe one, but there needs to be a criteria, just to add two people without any kind of criteria. I would like to see some criteria, maybe that they actually own property in that, in the CRA area, that maybe they have that, and maybe, you know, maybe we should have a process where they may application, and we select somebody that's maybe best qualified, or we feel that is, is like the, really knows what's going on in the community and gets fee, actually wants to go get feedback, wants to put the time in. So we can really do this thing great. I mean, I see it. I see we could do it, and we're missing a lot. So I think we could do it, but I think there needs to be criteria for these people. I would like to see them actually paying into the tax base. And then some kind of criteria, maybe develop an application, or, I, I just had that thought.
Devin, I agree with you. I think that it's important that we do have a, a process for people that would like to take that position, and, and I think it should be two, simply because that makes it seven, which is not an even number. I think that's very important. But I, I do think that there should be some criteria, just as there was for, as, as you got put back on the council. But I mean, you know, nobody else came forward, and, and you did, but that's because you wanted the position, and that's, and we're glad to have you. But I think that this is the same thing, we can't just pick a couple people out of the hat and say, well, you need to do this. Well, maybe you could do that, but you need to make application if you would like to do this. So I think that's, that's important. And then we can, as a council, we can choose the two people that we want to go on to the board.
Well, my envision was like the Regional Utilities Commission, that they are supposed to be experts, that can, they're not just anybody off the street. So I think the first thing is if we can make a motion that we can add two people with the consideration that they have expertise, or are business owners, or...
I, I just leave it broad, and see if you can...
By appointment.
...town administrator develops something and, and say, you know, with criteria, and then approve the criteria maybe at the next meeting or something.
I, I have one question, oh, for our attorney. Are members of the CRA under Sunshine Law?
Yes.
Okay.
There's also nothing to say that we can't have a CRA board, that would, those people would be liaison to the actual business. I mean, there's all things you can do.
Yeah, even like the advisory boards we had talked about, or that we had envisioned, volunteer, volunteer advisory boards, of course, then they would be under CRA, under Sunshine Law also.
Yeah, I think that, that's another consideration, you don't want to put too many people involved, because then you have all these people under Sunshine Law, and nobody can talk to one another without, without a violation, so.
And the business owners can't talk to each other.
I, I've actually looked at Sebring's CRA, and I've looked at some other town's CRA, and it's easy to look at Sebring's, they've got a wonderful website, and so they've got who the makeup is of the, the members. And granted, they got a lot more money, because the first thing people tell me, well, we just have a little bit of money. Well, hopefully, over time, we'll have a lot of money. So I do support adding two, I mean, town council is fine, but I like to get input, just like we did from the citizens. We got a lot of good input from the citizens on things that they think we should be working on, that maybe over the years, there were other priorities. Because it gets back to priorities, money and priorities, right? And the amount of time you have to spend on something. So I personally would like to see us fill that agency with seven, if, if our ordinance already allows five, which says it's town council, and two additionals. I'd like to see us add two additionals, and I would like to see them be business owners. I think the more we start involving our business owners in some of the decisions that we're making, I think it's going to only benefit this town. So, I mean, the Sebring CRA is not town council members. It's made up of just the public and business owners. I'd like to see us go in that direction. When we get lots of money, I'll be coming back with a recommendation to turn the mix up, to get the feedback, because at the end of the day, I think the town council makes the decision of the spending of the money. So that's mine. I mean, I, I would like to modify your, because your motion is to add two members, I'd like to modify it to add two business owners as members. The business owners in the town that are in, inside the town limits.
Do we have a, a motion on the floor? Or we just...
Yeah, a motion, a second, to add two positions to the CRA.
Okay, cool, sorry.
If you want to modify it, and then see if...
I can, I can modi, I could modify it to...
If Ms. Hayes wants to revise it.
I'd go with it.
All right, so we have the motion, modified motion?
You want the modified motion, add business owners?
Yes, I'll modify the motion that, that the two additional people are business owners or have professional expertise in the area of redevelopment.
I'm kind of stuck on business owner. I'm kind of stuck on business owner. I don't want the either or, just business owner. And I'm your second.
And if I may?
I'm the second.
Okay, I, I want to keep it open for someone with professional expertise, because we may be limiting ourselves by just having business owners. There may be somebody out there, he was a genius, but does not own a business.
But if you're not a business owner, you don't have a stake. You have an opinion, but you don't have a stake.
May we hear from the audience?
Michael Noel, my wife and I own some businesses downtown, but we're tenants, and I thought I overheard one of the comments being that, that would be a property owner, someone who actually was the taxpayer into the CRA funds, and I would urge you to consider that a lot of my money, I generate to pay rent to the property owner, so that he can own that property. So I wouldn't be, not that I'd have a voice in it, because I don't live in the property, but I would take exception personally to being a business owner excluded, because I didn't own the property, because our investment far exceeds some of the residential values of your voters right now. So out of respect for the businesses that are tenants, I think those business owners should be eligible for participation in your, in your CRA.
And I appreciate your comments. I've just been thinking about this a lot, and I just worried that we're also in charge of the county taxes as well. I was just a little concerned. But you're right, Mr. Noel, you create a lot of sales tax for this town, wish everybody would buy your gas in town. We get a portion of every, the sales tax is also used in the town limits, so spent, buy your gas in town, don't go somewhere else and buy it, because we do get sales tax. Every time you sell something, the town gets a little bit of it.
And that's really what I'm saying, I'm sorry, that, that's really what I'm saying, Mr. Noel, is that you are a business owner, and you should be eligible for one of these positions. I don't think you have to own the building and the land, you own the business.
And that, that was my thinking also, as a business owner, not as a property owner. So, but I really appreciate that clarification.
Except, that's not the clarification that Deborah Worley gave. I agree 100% with Mike. My name is Marlene Barger, and I also agree with Joy. I think you need to have people on the CRA who have, one, expertise, and you also have to have business owners. And those business owners do not have to own a piece of property in town, they just have to be a business in town. We tend to, we have ignored them all these years, and so we need to open up our doors and let them in. And if you want two business owners, then maybe a member of the council might want to give up their seat to add more people. But I think we ought to have a CRA that's made up of town people, the town council is here, you don't need to have it made up of all town council members. What makes other things successful is you bring more ideas in. And so I'll just leave it at that. But I think you have an opportunity in front of you, which is a great opportunity, to give voice to all of our business owners, whether they own a piece of land in town or not. And we have so, we don't realize how much talent we have in Lake Placid. People are here that have experience in many other areas, not just engineers, but architects and land developers. We need to embrace all those people and bring them in. Thank you.
One, one clarification. Our CRA is set up differently than Sebring's, and it's by the charter, by the ordinance, or by the method it was, paperwork whereby it was created. I think they have six citizens and one council liaison. Ours is defined as the town council plus two others. So we're limited, we cannot have somebody on the council give up their seat.
Or we change the code, right?
Then you gotta redo the whole...
No, I know, but...
Ken LeBlanc, yeah, I would just like to chime in that, you know, I understand you're set up with five council people and two extras, and I think that's the way you should go right now. I think long-term, see, the Sebring CRA has a really good makeup, and if you talk to Kristy over there, you'll find out that, you know, she says we have one person in finance, we have one person in real estate, we have one person who's a developer, one person who's a designer, or something like that. So they have chosen to have very specific categories, and she said before, she didn't have that, and it was chaos. And she said, but once they decided to have each individual, you know, category filled, it became a completely different CRA, and much more progressive and much more functional, she said. So I think long-term, changing from this to that, by changing your charter or whatever it takes, which I, I understand is not easy and takes time, but I think it's a good idea to start the way you're starting now. I think long-term, it might be a good idea to change it, you know, more like what, like I said, why reinvent a wheel? Kristy's been doing this for years, you know, and the Sebring CRA has been in business for years, and they finally figured out how to do it, you know? So maybe we should jump through the learning process and jump straight to, you know, the way they figured out works best, you know? And I'm sure it'll work best for us, too. But, but I also agree that, you know, just being a business owner or a building owner will cut out the possibility of some very talented people that are in our town, because, you know, we got a lot of retirees here. We got a lot of retirees that have came from all kinds of places, with all kinds of skills, and are willing to, to volunteer and help. And so if we've got somebody who's experienced in revitalization, you know, from some other place and is retired here, why not utilize their skills, you know, if they're willing to give them, right? So I think there's all kinds of, you know, possibilities there.
I was going to say the same thing that Kenny LeBlanc just said, it is a community redevelopment agency for redeveloping the community, and a business owner might sell flowers, doesn't really know much about community redevelopment. My husband and I owned an architectural company, we did planned urban developments. I can't be on it, because I live outside of the... I can't be on it, because I live outside of Lake Placid city limits. But I would say, I wouldn't just do business owners, because they might know everything about flower shop, but that doesn't mean they know about community redevelopment. So I would just think about opening it up to people like Kenny LeBlanc just said.
Clark, what do we got as a motion?
Where are we now?
I think Joy tried to revise hers.
But now hearing from the audience, the people, I'm back to the original, that it's two additional people. And of course, like with the utilities commission, they had to be appointed by, vetted, appointed by the council. So it's back to the original motion.
But the original motion that I had was to add two positions, business owners. Then you revised it to say, or have professional expertise in redevelopment.
Yes.
You didn't get another second from now to second your revision.
So I'm still going to stick with business owners or with experience in a relevant field.
In redevelopment or a relevant?
A relevant field, a relevant...
A relevant field.
Area.
Second?
I'd like to bring up again, I'm not going to be in favor of that. And the reason is, I don't think we should limit ourselves, one way or the other. Let's add two community members, let's see who comes to the table, let's see what credentials they bring, and then let's choose. Let's, don't limit it now.
So I'm getting confused on, because we have motion and a second, and then we revised. So the revision didn't pass, am I right, Bert? Because now it didn't second? Clear me up here.
No, I didn't second, but then she came up with another motion, and that was seconded.
Let's start from scratch.
Can we just withdraw your motions all?
I was going to say, start over.
Yeah, that's the best thing.
Just start over.
Ask her to withdraw her motion.
So, motion to add two people.
You have to withdraw the first motion.
I withdraw my motion.
And you're okay with withdrawing? Okay. Sorry, we're getting confusing. Okay, and now we're going to make another motion?
Okay, so I make a motion to add two more positions to the CRA, to be composed of a business, to be composed of a business owner or someone with relevant expertise.
I will second that. And then, just for my clarification, then we're going to ask these people to come in and give us a little presentation, and then we will choose from that pool of candidates.
You know, we could have 20 people apply.
Yeah, I'm good with that, I'm good with that.
Okay, so we do have a motion and a second. Any other discussion from the podium?
No, I would just like to add, very good point, because maybe we have a retiree who is on a CRA in another town, and they could add a lot of value. So I appreciate the comments that everybody made.
I just have one more thing, just to make it, you know, really nuts. The mission of the CRA, basically, is to improve infrastructure, to decrease blight, to improve walkability, street signs, landscaping, that type of thing. That's what the CRA is really, that's the mission of the CRA. Okay. And secondly, I'm always concerned about people that come to Lake Placid because they like it here, and they found the wonderful small-town atmosphere that they were finally looking for, and then they seek ways to make it like the place they just came from that they didn't like. That's just a concern.
Okay, I'll take it to the audience, any comments? Seeing none, bring it back, pull the council.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Okay, now go to 7A3, Coladium Festival Town Involvement.
Still on the CRA, so now going forward for the next meeting, is that when whoever is interested should put forth their names? How do you want, how do you want to do this?
I think Deborah said something about we need to create some criteria for it, don't you think? I think we need to create some criteria for the position.
We need a form and some kind of criteria, maybe questions, saying, so you could vet out whether their expertise is, and what business they own.
Well, I think if somebody submits their resume, I mean, we don't have to take the time to make a form, just have whoever is interested submit their experience, and we can judge by that.
I agree, similar to what we do for filling the open positions, submit your letter of qualifications and your interests, and be able to use that. And people are going to submit it in a way that they're going to really, you know, give us the criteria and the qualifications that they feel would be beneficial to the town.
But it might be important to at least, I'll probably say this word wrong, succinctly try to put down what the mission of the CRA is, because people may not even know what a community redevelopment agency is about, and what is the mission of that? What are they supposed to do? So how can you be qualified for something if you don't know what that agency is supposed to do?
The CRA description is on our website.
It's on our website, the development, the whole...
Oh, I know, it's on there, I've been, I read all of the 86 pages, took some notes as well. But I'm just saying that we might want to at least, if, at the very least, put that directive on there, that if you want to know what the CRA is really about, please go to the website, click here, click there, because it's not just one click, it's a couple. But, you know, click here, click there, and take time to read it.
So a question I have is, the other thing that came up on the CRA was not just the membership makeup, but also, I guess today, we only make decisions on money for infrastructure. And I know a lot of the other towns, you know, go beyond just infrastructure, sidewalks, roads, curbs, and parking. So I didn't see that, if that was something that needed to be changed in the future, especially as more money comes, is that something that just the committee can do? I didn't see it actually as part of, you know, our code.
Well, going forward, because I also talked to Christie Vasquez, the Sebring CRA Executive Director, and I went through their website. They have set up for, they have one matching grant of the $10,000 for building facades, they have another $10,000 matching grant for outside table seating, and they have another $5,000 grant for interior modifications. I asked Christie if it'd be okay, actually, I'm trying to, what I'd like to do with the next meeting is discuss diverting some of our funds from pure infrastructure like sidewalks, and divert some of the money to the businesses. So modeling, I have her permission to model after their programs, to basically steal all their verbiage for requirements for the matching grants, if that's how we want to go.
I think Mr. Harris, I'm sorry, I think Mr. Harris, this may be where you need to weigh in, is that a CRA board request that would modify the ordinance or the plan? Or is that a town council question as far as modifying the plan?
Actually, it's in the CRA paperwork that it includes streetscapes and such. So we can divert from sidewalks.
You're going from streetscapes to facades, which is the grant program for Sebring. If you're going to match their language, that's facades, and then interior remodeling and exterior seating. So that's a change from what the current plan is, and that's the question for the attorney, if you do that as a CRA board, and the request, I'm not sure how you change that, whether it's appropriate here or whether it's appropriate at the board, that's a question for the attorney, I believe.
So I see, and nuances.
I've already gotten in trouble tonight once for relying on my memory, so I don't want to do that again. But having said that, my recollection is that we distinguished between public and private using the CRA tax money for public infrastructure, sidewalks, crosswalks, the landscaping, streetscaping. I remember the council had a really cool design, proposal regarding North Main in front of Ken's property, making wider sidewalks and something much more walkable and usable. That, I believe, is the type of infrastructure defined in our CRA, as opposed to taxing everyone and spending that on a private person's property, two different deals. I believe you're going to have to come back to town council to make that large of a change, that's significant of a change.
I expect a discussion on that, that would be for another town council meeting.
Yeah, and what I was hoping is if you would give us some guidance, and you already have one, and we'll find out what we need to do to make it legal and bring it back next meeting, if that makes sense.
As it stands now, the mandatory requirements of the CRA plan are the legal description of the boundaries, of course, and the certificate of need, basically, the idea that we need these things, the criteria for slum and blight, because that's what it's meant to, for slum and blight, because that's what it's meant to get rid of. It's not meant to, as our attorney said, to augment any one particular business, it's meant to increase an area, so that you would have less incidents of crime, and you would have better walkability, and you would have better pedestrian safety, and crosswalks, and street lighting, and streetscaping, and things like that. That's what the CRA is about, is about the infrastructure like that. It's not about awnings and signs and things like that, it's the bigger picture. But it may well need to be readdressed, because some of the projects and things that are in the five-year plan and the 10-year plan and the current CRA, is, they was done in 2007. So a lot of these things have been done, and a lot of them have not. So there's still some valid points in the plan.
Maybe a workshop?
If I may make a suggestion, it sounds like it might be the issue for the next workshop before the next meeting, to hash out how you would like to change the CRA, and then we can come up some language, and then address whether it's an ordinance, just a simple ordinance change, if you change the boundaries, you go back to the state, you start over. If you change the entire composition of the board, I believe, you go back to the state, you start from scratch. For these changes, I'm not sure, and we get some direction, but if we can do that, we'll see, if y'all would make a motion or give me a direction, that that be the workshop before the next meeting, we can do that and address CRA issues. Or if you want to bring the other two members on board first, and then have them involved in the discussion, that may be an option, too. It's entirely up to you, I don't, it makes no difference to me, so.
I think we should wait and get the two members on, and then go as a group of seven. That was just, we may remake the wheel in the wrong direction if we don't do that.
I think this might be for Mr. Harris, the two people that you pick for the CRA, will they have, will they fall under sunshine, and will they have to bring up their financials?
Yes, they will fall under sunshine, I don't know about their financials.
I don't think they will, because they're not elected.
And just another quick note, I have to thank Rachel and Eva for carrying the ball on the CRA, going to all the meetings, and keeping us on the straight, near what we're supposed to do. So I know that we've been caught up quite a bit. It was too narrow when I, we started with it, I thought. But we've also thrown around, there's a couple programs, if you qualify for them, you can spend some of that money to do actually, actually a plan, you know, spend the money to do a plan before we really get just going. One's called Main Street, is it Main Street America? We can apply to be part of it, but then they give us a plan, so we can actually have a guidance before we just go. And Sebring, I think, has over 500,000, at one time they had 700,000, how much do we have?
130, 150?
But anyway, I just thought, you know, that's kind of where I had thought we could go, and maybe try to get a plan, and not stop spending money, but just maybe get an overall plan for our downtown area, that, I thought that was a good, good idea.
I'd like that they'll come back, because I think she's asking an important question that may, you know, if they have to do a Form 6, I didn't think they did, because I, do you know? Eva's holding her hand up.
They are listed with the ethics for Form 1.
Yeah, it could be Form 1.
Not Form 6.
So they may have to do a Form 1, because they're, do all of our advisory boards?
On the CRA board, and our LPA, regional utility, I think they're on it, too. Only Form 1, though. So Form 1 is very limited, I do a Form 1, several of us.
Form 1's employees, right? And...
It's not elected.
Right, it's a non-elected position.
I would be very careful about that, because those are advisory boards to the council, they're going to be part of the CRA, and I think you ought to find out the correct legal opinion.
Let's let Bert figure it out, that's why he's here, right?
So when will you get us that response, so we can make the public aware, so that, because that may have a bearing on who wants to send in their interest letter?
Yeah, good point.
This week is slammed, next week I'll have your answer.
And then how will we communicate that? Because if we're talking about the next meeting, to have interest letters so that we could appoint the people?
Through Eva.
Okay.
Eva can handle it.
So, so to the public, if anybody's interested in applying with your interest on being the two additional CRA members, get with Eva, and that she will have within two weeks the, which form requirement, if any, that needs to be done. So Eva will have the requirements, right? Perfect.
And I'll jump in, because it's part of the Item D1 discussion about, we will include those website, and however we advertise, that's part of the D1 discussion about how you want to advertise and what we do to fill these positions. So that'll kind of be fleshed out, this along with the other items.
Any other discussions? Okay, anything from the audience? We don't have a motion or anything, do we? Okay. All right, so now we'll go to 7A3, Coladium Festival Town Involvement.
Okay, well, what was, I'm sorry. Okay, I wasn't concerned about the event fees, I just wanted assurance that the town would be cleaned up for the Coladium Festival, and Alan provided, I don't know if it's in here, or if it's only in our packet, but he provided an extensive list of things that they do with edging, trimming, pressure wash, there it is, it's in there. And actually, I thank you for doing that, but also, this way people know that you do have a handle on it, and there's a lot of work to be done. And some of the things I even noticed is what they make sure that there aren't any, there aren't uneven pavers, that might be a trip hazard, down to that detail. Thank you.
Is it safe to say the similar checklist is done for the country fair? Is this kind of like a twice-a-year, these are the activities, and that's great? Same thing.
So we're done with that?
Yes.
Okay. So now we'll go to 7A5, Federal Legislative earmark.
I guess I put this on here to assign to Bert and Kevin. So over the last couple weeks, one of the, call it, the grant applications, and for a better word, that was submitted to Franklin's office back in March, they came back and they wanted it pared down. This was the $85 million grant, they wanted it pared down. And Kevin said, and there was a short window, we had like three days to respond. So Kevin tried to set up a meeting amongst the council, we weren't available, that was the special meeting that you saw, then it was canceled. And then because of the tight timeframe, it went forward. And so I feel, again, transparency, that if we are putting to a position where we have to make a decision outside of town council, that we should at least at the next meeting, bring it forward, have that similar discussion, you know, not just for the public, but also for the council members, on what exactly was submitted. So, and in this case also, because it's, you know, it's a federal grant that we're asking for, so... So, um, I think the grant is in the package. Kevin, I don't know if you want to take it from there or Bert, who's got lead, but it's just a brief, you know, summary to the public and to us on, um, what was submitted.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll take it from there. So, um, so Congressman, it's a federal earmark request from Congressman Franklin's office. And on March 11th, the council passed a resolution, which is included in the packet. Um, this is the letter, not the resolution. This is the resolution. It lays out the reason for the grant, the reason we should qualify it, uh, qualify for the grant and kind of the background of why we're, why we're getting there. In that, um, in section six, it laid out a order of what would we apply for the grant. So, it talks about annual grants. At that time, when, I'll speak for Bert a little bit, we've had a lot of conversations. We didn't know where they were going to come in and what, how much we were going to apply for, but we broke it down. Um, so if we, if they came back and said, yeah, you can apply for 20 million, we would have included items one and two, um, possibly three is 21 million. So, we broke down the areas. We, uh, added some additional estimates because it's been two years since we had those, um, those engineers' estimates. And so, this is two-year inflation rate. It's in here and it says it in the resolution. We're very clear about what it is. So, we took the first item on the list, which was passed by the council, and that's what was applied for in the letter to Congressman Franklin. The reason for the, try to held the special commis-, uh, special council meeting was we have two new council members that ran on a platform about the wastewater treatments collection system. So, we was trying to give them an opportunity to weigh in, and if they had decided to change that priority list that was passed by the previous council, then that would have given them ability to do so. Without a special meeting, then staff's only choice was to go ahead with what the resolution the council had passed. So, that's what we did, moved forward and applied for the federal grant. It will be a while before we have, it goes through the congressional earmark process. We'll know in the next couple of months whether it made the list, and then we'll wait on Congress to pass a budget, which we know, if you pay any attention, takes a while. So, it may be any number of months before we, um, in fact, have this money, so. But that's, this is the whole, the whole, uh, application, the modification and where we're at, so, and Bert's letter. So, it's in the package for anybody that would like to see it. There is a 589 page, 489 page, the full application is available, um, from Eva, if you really want to read all 489 pages of it. Um, that was the original earmark request, so.
So, the 587 page, that's the 85 million, so that, so that this March would, if we added that up, that's 85 million. Those are all the projects that, so my only question is, I thought it was at the March meeting or that there was a decision that we would go first with Placid Lakes. Was that the, the December meeting? So, when, when we were going to go forward to bid, right? It was the Utility Advisory Commission had to make a priority list of, okay, uh, we think the sewer plant's going to be $28 million. We only have $40 million. So, which area should we decide would be the first ones we start? And that decision at that meeting was Placid Lakes. So, something happened between then that Placid Lakes fell to number three?
Placid Lakes was-
Trying to understand just timing of events with these different grant requests.
The December meeting had Lake Placid first.
Yep.
And then Placid Lakes. It was, that schedule has not changed. It was still Placid Lakes first and then Placid Lakes. Start on the lake that feeds into Lake June, so that priority did not change between the December meeting and this resolution. Placid Lakes was part of the recommendation. It was different than the Utilities Commission recommendation, which was Lake Pearl and Lake Serena.
Mm-huh.
But the order was still Lake Placid first, north and south, and then Placid Lakes in that order. So, that, that, that did not change in that recommendation. We're talking about two entirely different grants, however. That motion was to focus, narrow down what we would be looking to bid on under the current $40 million grant. So, they're two different grant applications, but the $40 million grant was to reduce it down with the EP, Lake Placid first, then Placid Lakes. So, we excluded, we had already excluded Sun and Lakes, we'd already excluded South Town. We went in and excluded Lake Pearl, Lake Serena, Lake June Point, Lake June Hills. We left in Lake June Road. So, that was, those are the four projects that were left in, um, as far as our application was going with the EP. This was a federal earmark, um, so different grant application between the two that we were excluding on what we were trying to focus on going out to bid on.
Do we know what the timing of them giving us feedback on this may be?
The, when I look up federal earmarks, we said we will know something by December.
December?
December.
Okay.
So, it's a, it's very, we may know something sooner, we may know something later, but that's just when you look up and try and find out the answer because it's based on when Congress acts.
That would be two steps. Step one was if we make the congressman's earmark recommendation, and then step two is if Congress approves. Step two is, I think, what Kevin is referring to will certainly be later in the year. Step one will be sooner than later. Don't know the answer how much sooner. One thing that I think is important to note about the earmarks, this does not compel hookups. It's totally consistent with the last vote, um, and it would be, could be used to fund 100% of the hookups. So, it's, I believe, compliant with what you had requested. Anything else? Any discussion on that? Okay. We'll move on to 7A6, uh, the police station, location discussion.
This was raised in the last meeting. I did, um, pass out, um, the cost estimate from Cool and Cobb of what they expected the difference in the, and it's town of Lake Placid. I just got that this afternoon. They've been working on it, trying to put it together. So, that's why you didn't see it as part of your packet. It wasn't done. Um, on the difference between option one and option two, the, uh, and there is, and literally I printed this out between just before the, the budget workshop or the orientation workshop, so I have not reviewed it entirely. Uh, so, but basically, you'll see option two is roughly $95,000 more expensive. It's a flatter site, better access to growth in future. This is their opinion on the, uh, on the location. There's also an additional $31,000 in design fees that go along with that. Um, the, they ran into some issues on the permitting as they started looking at the permitting of this site, and that's why you'll say it's, option one actually delays you a little bit longer than option two as far as construction, only because of the way the swift mud permit and DOT connections, that it may add some delays. The retention pond, which is huge out here, and we get into swift muds, um, regulations, is not sized for anything other than this building, so they do have to enlarge that pond or believe they will have to enlarge that pond and go through the modification. And then because it's adjacent to USD, uh, US 27, DOT will have to weigh in on the plans and the designs. So, that's why the, uh, they, you may see a couple of months additional to stay on this site as opposed to go to the other site. The other site's more expensive because we, um, have to add, you're adding retention on either site, but we have to add parking lots that we were going to use the existing parking lot site here or there. You'll have to add a front parking lot and a back parking lot and sidewalk around the back, a couple of other things. So, that's where the difference, uh, the difference in funding is at.
Do you have this chart for the public to see? You gave us a chart.
I did, like I said, I did not have time to put this on. I don't know.
You don't have it, Eva, that you could just put it on?
I don't have it. Did I, was that one of the ones you sent me?
No, no, I literally just got this this afternoon, so I did not get it on the, uh...
So, now that I caught up with you, so option one is the current location and option two is looking at building it on Hillcrest?
Hillcrest was the previous location.
That was where you originally?
That was the previous location. I apologize for that. So, that was the previous location, was the site on Hillcrest. It was actually the rear of that property, not the front of the property. Um, for relation, that's the vacant lot in behind, um, Mr. Harris's office. So, that is where the county was going to build the fire department and we were going to build the police department. The county couldn't give us answers on their design. It's, again, I was not involved in these initial discussions, but I sat through the meetings where the council was. Fire department didn't know on their property and how they were going to develop the ponds, and it was delaying the process of us planning for the police department. So, that was part of the reason and the logic, I believe, to move it to this site. And, uh, but anyway, as you had those discussions, I also just, so this is the, trying to provide you all the information that I could in the, between the last meeting and this meeting. We also had a conversation with USDA, just so you all are aware, of a possible low-interest loan as opposed to using our, um, reserve funds or infrastructure, not our reserve funds, which are our reserves, but infrastructure fund. That's currently funded with ARPA funds and our infrastructure fund. I, uh, we would qualify for a USD low-interest loan, which is currently at 3.5%. Um, we do qualify for 55% grant, but they don't have funding from Congress for that, so we have no idea if we would get any grant, but we do qualify for up to 55% grant. However, that process USDA is a, um, a little bit of a tedious process, but it is a funding possibility. It would take somewhere between six and eight months. It would run concurrent to either of these options. So, if you were six to seven months under construction under option one, you'd only delay a month. If you were under option two, you're going to delay about two months before you start of construction. I just want to lay all that out there for your discussion. If you wanted us to apply for, that's the only grant funding that I have found that's available for the police station. We tried, as you know, for the legislative appropriation. We did not get, um, and that was just trying to protect our funds and use other people's funds as possible. Uh, another note, you can go up to 30 years on this low-interest loan. There is no prepayment penalty, so if you had other, other funds come available or you decided we don't want to pay the interest over the 30 years and then use your reserve funds, there's no prepayment penalty for that. So, let's leave it up to your discussion.
Kevin, you said something about $31,000 in, in design fees. Where does that land?
It's not in this line item. It's another spreadsheet that's very confusing, um, and I was confused at it and I was familiar with all the numbers, so I didn't provide you that. Basically, they have $31,000 in additional, and that's a lot, um, in additional design. They have to design the parking lot. They have to move the bill. The building doesn't change.
Right.
You're picking it out, that building up and putting it somewhere, but now you have to design the parking lot. You've got to design the storm drainage, which they have already started part of this storm drainage.
Yes.
Design. It changes, he modified some of these numbers because you don't have, if you put it here, there's a, uh, just drew a complete blank on what that is. You've got to put concrete pipe in front of the police station because that's where all the swells are and you have to move the swells and reroute water because everything from up on the north end of the property flows south into the pond, and so that water has to be rerouted. So, there's structures that have to get constructed that won't necessarily have to get constructed on the other site. So, it's not just, here's the price, it's what the price differences are as he, as Cool and Cobb moved through that design change, to come up with as accurate an answer as they could in two or three weeks.
So, option two, according to this paper, is roughly $95,000 more expensive plus $31,000 in design fees?
Correct.
Okay, so it's really 126,000 more expensive.
That's correct.
So, I, I don't know if this, is possibly, this needs a motion or something to, to move forward, but I, I just, I don't want to move backward on this project. Um, and I can certainly appreciate what the people said, that they want the police station downtown, and I understand that, but I, I think that folks, that I would feel the same way if I didn't come out of that business. But I know now that I was in law enforcement as a civilian for 20 years and the difference that it made over those 20 years for what you had to do at a location versus what you can do in your vehicle has totally changed. And anything that the officers would do at a police station, they now do in their vehicles. So, having the police station out here, that's going to, that's going to free them up to be downtown more. And so, their presence downtown is going to be better, better seen if they are downtown. So, um, and I think the other things that were brought up when we first discussed this months ago before you folks were on the council is that the, the idea was that we would create a municipal center and, and that the town hall here would be the, the center, the municipal center. In addition, we would have the police station here and eventually possibly a fire station and EMS, all in one municipal area. We have plenty of room to do that on this site. So, um, that being said, um, I would like to make a motion that we, let's move forward with the police station on this site the way we are currently going, um, in an effort to get it completed in a timely manner because we really do need that. I don't think you girls toured the police station, went there, but I really don't think you took the tour.
We did.
Did you go in the evidence room?
We went wherever the chief took us.
If you went in the evidence room, I challenge you to be able to turn around because I couldn't, and I'm shorter than you are. So, um, you, you literally, if you pull a drawer out, you can't turn around. And the longer we delay this project, we've already delayed it literally 10 to 15 years. And the longer we delay it now, the worse it's going to get. We need to move forward. So, that's my motion, is that we continue to move forward without delay on the project as it has currently been voted on, option one, to put the police station here.
I'm going to make a second, then I wanted to make a comment. Yes, when we purchased this property, and I was part of that, this was, that, it's named Government Center because this is where, it's probably going to be more the center of Lake Placid in the future than anything else downtown. It's going to be obsolete eventually downtown. So, we're looking to the future. This complex, this building will last the town, I think, at least 50 years, 100 years from now. I mean, we still have, we, don't we have 17 acres here?
What's that, acres?
Yeah.
I think it's 15.
17.
17?
Yeah, we have 17 acres here to grow, and we have a baggage road back here that will be incorporated, so we will have a light down here. I mean, it's all been very well planned, and we also spent $30,000 on that Hillcrest site. We might as well have thrown it in the trash. It didn't fit there either. It's a difficult piece of property. It's narrow. So, we have tried and tried, but, um, and I just wanted to make a comment. Last meeting, I got interrupted when I started. I never said police department out of my mouth, not once, not any time. I never said police department, ever. I was talking about assets, and you can stick your head in the sand if you want to, but, okay, originally, we have other buildings and we just need to know, not saying, I'm just saying, I thought it was a great idea that the town, the people that are in charge of all the assets for the town should know where they're at. We voted on a $40 million sewer plant. I don't think anybody's been to the site. We have offices over there. We have offices, we have this wonderful building. I was talking about Harry's building out here, that he's organized with all the small equipment. There's buildings all over the place. But when we first started with the police department, we were going to take the police department where it was at, we were going to sell that building. Now, we even talked about, which wouldn't have been feasible, but trying to, you know, make this so that actually the police department's not going to cost that much money, you know? Okay, we're going to sell, what are we going to do with these buildings? So, we're going to, what are we going to do with the police department? We're going to just keep- So we're going to, what are we going to do with the police department? Are we going to just keep it as a shrine? What are we going to do with that? Well, the plan was we sell town hall. Okay, we did that. We sell the police department. And then when the fire department moved out, that was a hard nut to crack because how do you sell a police department? But now, as things have moved along, and now we're going to have this giant utility. It's a great place for our utility to move to, where everybody can be in one place. We have that glorious ambulance and fire department building there to put all of our equipment in, to get it out of the weather, the things we need to get out of the weather. But the, I'm not saying that's what we should do. I would just like everybody to have input on that, maybe have an asset discussion. And let's look at all the assets. I never said anything, one darn thing about the police department. I didn't even know it was going. I didn't even know how much it was going to cost last meeting. I've gotten up to speed since then, so now I know. So I just wanted to make that statement. Thank you all very much.
So we got a motion in a second? Any further discussion from the podium?
Yeah, I just make, like to make a couple of comments. So, and Deborah, Mrs. Worley, I appreciate that. I do know though, that when this building was purchased to be the center, it was also planned at that time, the police department would be part of it. And so for whatever reason, over time, right, we've run out of room where we don't have room to build the police, you know, to have it housed within. So then we're moving towards building a new site. And again, you know, I, I appreciate the comments, but there, where there is a building is kind of the comfort and security. And if now all of the officers are going to continue to be in their cars, then why do you need a building? So, and I don't think that's what we want. I mean, you're not building a building just for an evidence room. It's, there is going to be the chief's office, the detective, you know, you've got people inside that building. And because they are inside that building, brings a lot of comfort to people, there's a police department in the center of town. Now, I've just heard that the center of town, our vision is it's moving, so, because I don't call this the center of town. I call this the northern part of town. But if in the future, the plan is town is growing more north and this will be the center, then that does bring a different. But the residents are on, not here, the majority of the residents are down by the school. And, and that's a lot of the concern too with, you know, the kids walking and the, so I listened to a lot of people on the location. And, I mean, is there ever planned for a fire station in town? I mean, is that just a dead item altogether? And I don't mean to be delaying this at all. I really don't. And nobody, including myself, doesn't agree that we need a new police station. Okay, that, that's just, I want to put that out there. It's the location that's the concern. And people are also, you know, the fire station too. I mean, as this town continues to grow, you know, the need for a good fire station in close proximity is very important.
I challenge you to take the fire station to the county.
We even tried to try to figure another town hall downtown. We, we spent $30,000 trying to move it over to that same site and it was just money wasted. We moved all over the place. When I said, let's build a new station rather than put them in an old, broken down building again that's not designed for a station. That's when Hoss Conton jumped up and donated that land on South Main. That didn't work either. I mean, it's a challenge. There's not that much, I don't know. I mean, we tried. And we tried for years and we tried for years to find a place for, when, at town hall, when we moved, there was two women sitting at a desk together with elbows. I was afraid we were going to have a fire and it's going to be a disaster. You would not believe the conditions there because we kept trying to find something downtown. This building was only 975,000. Look at it. It's gorgeous. We got all the commercial equipment. We got all the tables, all the chairs. People still hate me because I said, yes, let's do this with the 17 acres on 27th, only 975,000.
All right. Good point.
Again, there's no question that we need a new police station from what you showed us. Absolutely no, no question about it. And I understand that the officers are in their cars now. But again, the feedback that we got, and I remember it from, well, I'll corroborate what Colleen is saying. The feedback from the people is that there's the intangible comfort of having a police presence closer to the main area. It's just the warm and fuzzy, rather than out here where it's, you know. And they, and they understand that you're in the cars. They understand all that, but for some unexplainable, warm and fuzzy, they feel much safer if there's a building. The perception of a presence in the downtown area.
Police department is not a building. A police department is people. And that's what we need to accommodate is our people. We need to accommodate the proper storage of evidence so that arrests that we make can go to trial.
I'm not arguing. We do need a new building.
But that's why we need it.
The only question is the location.
But the location is already underway out here and we just need not to delay any farther. This, as, as Colleen said, she wasn't aware that this, the town is projected to grow in this direction. And I'm sure the people that are in town really don't want it to grow in this direction. I mean, I lived in town for a long time and I wouldn't want it to grow in this direction either. But the reality is, this is, this is really the only way for the town to grow, is this direction. And we, we need to be, we need to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money and look to the future. And sometimes that vision is a little more clear than the folks that are just seeing their, their own town.
I want to ask the police chief. If the police station was here or if it was downtown, where would your police officers be?
The same place they are now. They'll be in their cars out on the road.
Okay.
That's their job. That's what they're paid to do.
They're not going to be spending a lot of time at the town, at the police station.
No, I don't even myself spend a whole lot.
They're going to be downtown protecting our citizens.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no, it, it's understood and the people, you know, understand that you will be in your cars. You will not be sitting at a desk at the station, wherever it is. I can't explain. It's just the perception that there is, the building is there, that.
Yes, ma'am. There, there are studies that show that. There's no scientific evidence to support that a police station in the center of an area makes it safer. People just feel safer with it there. I, I, I actually understand that. What I try to get across is the officers are in their car. The location of the station is irrelevant. The officers are on the road doing their jobs. That's where they're at. They're in their cars. They write their reports in their cars. They can print the reports in their cars and hand them to you right there. Everything is done from their vehicle now. It used to be we had to handwrite this stuff and go back to the station and do it all. It made sense to have it in the middle of town then because we were tied to the station because of that. Now we're not. The, the technological advances have made it to where the station is just a place, and for lack of better things, to house evidence. We need to house our evidence and to have our support staff to process the paperwork.
Administrative and?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
It, it, that is what we are looking at doing. It is nothing to do with location. I personally would just like to see this project continue. I've, I've worked here for 26 years as a police officer and I've seen this, this debate continue. It is circled around the field like this plane that is never going to land. And every year we go around, this field is exponentially more money we are adding to the price of this building. When we first started, the estimated cost of this police department was $735,000. That's including the property, construction and design. We're now up to almost 1.5 million because we continue to delay this project and delay it to, to get more information, to look at different options. This is a plane we need to land. I get, right now is probably the worst time to build, but there is never going to be a better time.
Better time.
It is never going to get better. So we have to make a decision, a commitment as a town and move forward.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to keep.
I have one question to Kevin, just to clarify on the cost. So what we're saying here is option two is 95,000 more expensive, but it's a much flatter site with better access and growth. So we're talking 95,000, uh-uh, what?
We're talking 95,000 plus 31,000 in design fees.
Yeah, yeah, that was, I was going to say.
$126,000.
That's what exactly I was going to say. 95,000 plus the 30,000 in the change in the design fees. And is that something that you feel grants could cover? Or where would that funding come from if that was a decision?
Taxpayer dollars.
The.
Well, sure, everything is taxpayer dollars. The whole 1.5 million.
Any additional money right now is, and depending on where the bids come out or whatever, is going to have to come out of the infrastructure fund.
Okay.
If we apply for the USDA low interest loan, there's no guarantee there's any grant money available for that. We're eligible for 55% of that to be grant. They, in that discussion, they said, we don't have a lot of funding for grant. We're not going to tell you there's any grant available. It will be at the time of the processing whether we get any grant or not. So that's the, that's why I didn't even put, I didn't put low interest grant loan. Although it's a grant, it's a loan grant program, primarily loan. You may qualify for grants, but there funding for grants is always a challenge. So that's a, we haven't found any other grants out there to pay for any of the, any of the costs. We're using our ARPA funds to cover the other piece of this. And, which we still have, I believe we have time, but time's not on our side. June of 2026, those funds have to be expended. We have to close out the grants on the same timeline. So, but we're not in a huge crunch yet.
Okay.
Yeah, the, when I, well, I didn't know, so I needed to go find out. I thought that the police station wasn't going to be under my purry, but evidently it is. But, so I went to find out, where's the police station going? I heard it was going out here, but I'm a council member and I don't know where it's going. So then I found out, I found out the figures. We did lose a grant, I think, wasn't it? We have like about around 555,000 grant money. Is that right? Okay, and we still have that. We lost the other grant money. So the difference between 15 million five and that's going to be, come out of infrastructure. So they're still applying for grants, but we already sold town hall. That was supposed to go towards the police station. What were we going to do with that building? It really didn't serve any purpose and we, it was, I just, we just needed to sell it. So, and build a real police station. So, so we sold, we sell the building they're in. Let's say it's probably maybe around 300,000. And I think we sold the town hall for 350. So that's how much, plus the 555 we have in the grant money. So it's the difference now, we're trying to seek, if you look at the assets that way, and I'm not saying what y'all should do with these assets, but evidently the public utilities needs the police station. It makes sense because we, we can't sell it for anything else almost. But that's the figures. And that's kind of where we started this whole thing, to try to get to where we could afford to build the police station.
And don't forget the building that we have now is a police station. That's a valuable piece of property.
It is, and we can sell that.
We will sell that and then that money comes right back into the, back into our funds, so.
I have to say, Lori Slade did a beautiful building with our old town hall. But I'm just saying, we sold that to fund the new police station. We will sell the building they're in to fund the new police station. We have this wonderful grant money of 555,000. So we're whittling down on that and now we're talking about maybe getting a grant loan type of situation. So we're not done yet, but it is tough. People were really mad that we had town hall out here, but we had people, it was a serious, critical situation. We had to do something. We couldn't just keep looking around for a site.
Okay. So the, the motion is to keep the police station here?
Move forward with the police station with option one.
All right, that, that's the motion we're talking about. Okay. Any comments from the audience?
I'll be brief. This is Ken LeBlanc. I think, you know, I expect that when historic downtowns grow, it's normal for the town hall to move out of, out of the downtown. It's normal for police stations to move out of downtown. They, they become bigger, you know, the facilities need to be bigger than what the, the historic downtown can handle. You know, when the town hall moved here, I supported it because town hall is not, it's a destination. People drive to it to do their business and they leave. It doesn't really bring value to the downtown. And I think the police station is kind of the same thing. I mean, fortunately, we have a substation for the sheriff's department in the downtown. So we will have a police substation there still, I assume. But I think, I think the problem is more the warm and fuzzy thing that you were talking about. People feel like it should stay in downtown. They feel like town hall should stay in downtown. They feel like the police department should stay in downtown. But in reality, it doesn't change anything for it to move out. People drive to the police department. I had to go there a few times. I've driven there. I had to go to town hall a few times. I drive there, you know, and I just drive here instead. So I think it's a, I think the town council has got to make very smart decisions on the behalf of the town. I think this town hall being purchased was brilliant idea. I think it was a very good idea and it saved the town a tremendous amount of money in the future. And I think the police, it's time to build a new police department. It's, it's long since, you know, time to build a police department. I think this is a smart place to build it. The land's free, you know, like you said, you're going to have a complex of your police department with your town hall and things like that. I think it makes sense. I think it just makes practical sense. And then the future, this is going to be more the center of the town than the town, you know, downtown is right now. Because through annexation and growing, you know, I think it just makes practical sense. So I'm in support of a police department here.
Had a conversation with one of our older members of the community that's been around here a lot of years. And we were talking about the, the, the police station and of course, moving the, the town hall from where it was to here. And he said, John, he said, I don't want to tell you a true story. He said, years ago, when town hall used to be downtown and they decided to build that new building. He said, everybody in town was against it because they were moving it out of town. Well, it, it really is not out of town. It's, it's still in town. And he's, he said, no matter where you put it, it's, it's going to be beneficial to the town. And he didn't have a problem with it anywhere. But I, I thought that was interesting that, 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 that he would, he would just say, people, a lot of people just don't like change. And I understand that, but I, I think we've got to make a decision on what we think's best for the town. And that, that's the way we need to go. So at this time, we'll go ahead and poll the council.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Aberhart?
Yes.
Thank you.
At the risk of delaying this discussion, I, I need to know some direction on whether to apply for the USDA low interest loan or not.
My, my question is, I understand a loan and we've got the money in the infrastructure account. How, how much would we spend on interest over the length of the loan? I, I don't know if that's a question we can answer or not, but I, I, I think to help save the taxpayers' money, my personal view is let's, let's just go ahead and pay for it. And then when we sell the, the police station we got and maybe even the other property down on Hill, on Hillcrest, that, that money's more than going to make up for it. But that, that's just my personal opinion. I don't know if anybody can answer my question on how much we would pay in interest on the loan. Because you, you can't guarantee we'll get the grant.
Michael Noel, I would take the 3% loan and you still have the money in the bank. And if you want to prepay the loan, you can without any penalty. And that frees your hands up for other projects that may come along that you're not particularly looking at and being on the radar right now.
Okay.
Mr. Noel was a, is still a financial advisor, so that's our.
I think that's on good authority.
I, you know, we can always not accept it. If they do decide to give it to us and Kevin beats his head against the wall, we don't really have to, have to take it if we do get it. I mean, you can all. I mean, you can always say, "No, we changed our mind," and say, "No," and then... We can look at our situation then.
You wanna, you wanna make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we apply for USDA loan towards the infrastructure for the police department.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion from the podium? Hearing none, we'll take it to the audience. All right, bring it back. Poll the council, please.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Okay, 7D1 Advisory Board Appo, uh, Advisory Board Appointments Replacement.
This one should go a lot faster. We have a vacancy on LUPRAC. We have an alternate vacancy on the LPA. I've received an interest letter from an individual that's interested in serving on the LPA. And then the real question is, how do you wanna go about advertising and filling positions? Because you could, there's several members, the council members could make recommendations. They could open it up to the general public. The advisory boards can come back, or we can do all the above. We can put it on the website. Just quick consensus about how you want me to advertise for the board positions.
Kevin, what is LUPRAC and LPA?
And now CRA.
That's the one we did already, right?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Didn't we do the utility and put you on it already?
You're adding, you're adding two members to the CRA board, so I'm a, I'm not gonna assume anything. But if you want me to put it on the website, how we solicit Nextdoor app, how we solicit volunteers to our boards.
I see what you're saying.
We don't have a process. In the past, it's been done a couple of different ways. We've had LPA members that come up with a member to make, to fill a vacancy, and they've made that recommendation. We've had council members, I understand, that have made the recommendation to fill. So, and then if you wanna open it up to the general public and say, anybody that's interested in apply, which I believe is the way we did the council seat, then we can do that. I just wanted some direction.
I think it'd be a good idea to have a consistent format for that. So I would make a motion that we, that we do put something on the website and have that consistent format, that someone, anyone that is looking to fill a vacancy that we have advertised, if you will, that they would come forth with a resume and be prepared to, to speak before council, to, uh, to speak their piece, I guess I should say. And then, and then give a, a date certain, a number of days that they need to respond by, if we, if we go that way.
Yeah, we'd also have a date.
Then give them like, respond within X number of days. Right, yes.
Yeah, it happens on a normal basis, so once we open those positions, it'd be filled for the next council meeting. So that'll be the, the date for these, if you want to do that. We would get it posted. It'll be, they'll have until the, the week before the June meeting, if you're looking for that, so.
I'll second that motion then. Thank you.
I had a, I was wondering if we had a second or not. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any other comments from the podium? Okay.
The motion as stated, the motion as stated is just fine. But a couple of times tonight, we have talked about using Facebook and, I believe, another app. If you are...
Nextdoor app.
If you are using those for town communications, that comes under public record, and you've got to save copies of every iteration. Are you doing that?
So, right now, for the website, we're covered on everything. The Nextdoor app, we don't do communications with the public. We just post the meetings or post the information. It is saved under the Nextdoor app. But Facebook is a whole different... I talked to the communication officer up Highlands County in length on how they're doing it up there. She, that's all she does. She, she, you see the Highlands County very interactive on Facebook. That's one person that does that on a regular basis, and they have special software and everything that they're doing that with.
And they keep copies. Chief has something on that. I think that, he's had that issue.
Currently, we do use the software at the police department to archive everything on Facebook that we do. The Lake Placid Police Department does, yes. And actually, I don't believe it's actually much more to add the town onto that account to archive a town account if the town wishes to proceed that direction.
My only point is tonight, that if you are using these other services, you must keep copies of every iteration.
And to remember when you're doing that, you have to keep copies of everything, even posts that are deleted. You have to have the copies of it.
Chief is correct.
Okay. Poll the council.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Okay, 7D2 FDEP grant for Lake June Hills Lift Station in Forstmain.
So Lake June Hills has its own wastewater treatment plant. We've had multiple conversations with the president of that homeowners association and their board. And they would like for us to, they're interested in closing their wastewater treatment plant. They would like us to seek loans or seek a grant to install a lift station in Forstmain to tie into ours on Lake June on County Road 17 North. This would be permission to apply for that grant through DEP. That grant cycle closes at the end of June. So we would have to get started on that grant fairly quickly. If not, then we're into next year, a year from now's grant application. So I need permission to apply for the grant on Lake June Hills' behalf.
How many homes does that service, that sewer plant that has no reuse?
That wastewater plant serves approximately 100. I didn't get the exact number, but approximately 100 homes are in that Lake June Hills subdivision on the wastewater plant.
So for me, this is an opportunity to take a, that, that plant was built, I think, in the 70s. Take 100 homes off the sewage going into the...
Deborah, I can't hear you, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Okay, so that, to me, that means we're taking 100 home sewage that's not going through any kind of process for reuse. We're taking it off the lake. And so if we can get a grant to do that, we're wiping out 100 homes, just that, and they want it. And it's a good thing, I believe. So I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion that we do apply for the grant.
I'll second that.
Yeah, years ago, when we built the plant, these are the type of little plants that we wanted to incorporate and, and put them into our system. So this, this just fits right in with what we wanted to do.
Do you all know where that plant is? If you go the back way out of town, okay. If you go the back way out of town, like you're going the back way to go to 27, like you're going out towards Heartland, to, you turn before you go, go to Tangerine. It's way down there, right by Lake June, right down at the bottom of the hill. You know, where that mobile home park is, yeah.
All right, any other comments from the podium?
Just quick, so this is a $500,000 grant. That's how much we think the grant's going to be?
That's a very rough estimate. We haven't done any engineering estimate on this, so, but just based on our current bids that we're getting on, this is a much smaller lift station than what we're putting in at Camping Conference Center. That was 320,000 for that one. This is a smaller lift station, so it's a guest, but yes, it's a $500,000 grant request.
And so this would be Gravity? Is that what we're thinking, or is it too early to even...
They are, they have a Gravity system.
This is, this is good, cuz it's right across the road from the current plant, pretty much.
It is, it's not across the road. It will be on the same site as the current plant. All of their Gravities into, all of their, their facility Gravities into a lift station, which then lifts it up into their plant. It's not a lift station that we, we would take over or maintain. We need a, what I'll say is a real lift station with dual pumps and a panel. It would still be on the same property as the current wastewater treatment plant, because that's where their all Gravity is designed to. So it's actually would be on part of their property. We'd have to negotiate where exactly, because we haven't done that piece of it, but would be on the same site. If you want me, I can probably pull it up and show it to you.
Yeah, I was gonna say, clarify that for me, cuz today they have a wastewater treatment, one of these many sites, right? They self-sufficient for that subdivision for about 100 homes. And so this would be not to reroute it to our wastewater plant? This would be, you're saying, lift stations and continue to use their wastewater treatment plant?
No, their, their wastewater treatment plant would get shut down.
Okay.
Right now, everything, Gravity's in their, their 100-home subdivision. Everything Gravities to a lift station, which then lifts it up into their plant. It's Gravity, it's below their plant, their bound plant. If you ride by there, their tanks are above ground. It Gravities into a lift station, and that lifts up into their plant where it's treated. This instead would Gravity into our lift station, which will then pump it to our wastewater treatment plant.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, where are we at? It's getting late. We have a motion in a second? All right, any other discussion? To the audience? Bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
All right, what's next? A technical assistance grant?
Yes, Regional Planning Council is RPC. We'd like to request permission to apply for a technical assistance grant with the, with the Regional Planning Council. In fact, the deadline was May 10th, so we actually have applied. We will withdraw it if the council disagrees. This is a technical assistance grant that would help us with a downtown historical district overlay and a US-27 overlay. It started, and I'll let Dana, if she wants to add to it, you're welcome to. But this is to come up, it started with the parking, and as we look through options and try and figure out how to do parking, and right now, our historical district is kind of Main Street and Interlake, and how you incorporate other neighborhoods into that, and what you do with an overlay, which is primarily facades and, and what it looks like, but it will also address parking and some other things. So it's a technical assistance grant through Florida Commerce, I believe. And so it's permission to apply for that grant. How much money? $75,000?
Only $25,000.
$25,000.
Does this, are, are you looking for a motion? Is that what, we, we need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the technical assistance grant with the RPC to help us with the historical district and US-27 zoning overlay.
I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second on the, on the podium. Any other comments up here? Take it to the audience. Bring it back, poll the council, please.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
All right, next is 7D2C FRDAP Playground/Splash Park Grant Request Directions.
This is, we are allowed, we are allowed to have two FRDAP Florida Recreational Development Assistance Program Grants open at one time. If the council would like us to try and apply for another one, those are due in August.
End of August.
End of August. And I need some direction if they want us to, if you would like us to apply for one of those FRDAP grants. There's been discussion tonight in, in my conversations about a splash park. And we also have two playgrounds at Lake June Park that are in need of replacement. So, just need a little bit of direction on where you'd like us to go and whether you'd like us to apply for one.
I'll jump in, because this was a, a lot of interest from the public on, you know, it's Florida, it's outside, the weather's beautiful, give our kids something to do. So there was a lot of interest in pursuing, again, not a water park, but a splash park, a splash pad. And so, you know, I totally support it. So, I mean, I'll make a motion that we pursue the, do you say FRDAP? Is that how you say that acronym? And I also, let me just back up. I also totally support replacement of a lot of the items at the, at the parks. And that came up a lot, you know, people pointed out what some of the things were wrong with some of our existing old playground structures, right? You know, if it gets used, it gets worn out. And I think it's important that we, we replace it. So it looks like this is a dual FRDAP request?
It'll be one or the other. So it's either gonna be, you're not gonna get both. FRDAP grants are limited to $200,000. They're also point-based. We're gonna have to be creative on either one of these, I believe, to get, actually make the list. So, but it'd be one or the other, just based on the cost of the... If you're gonna build a splash pad, you'll spend all $200,000 on the splash pad. So, if you're gonna build, do a park, you might get, well, no, not, not for the size parks we have. They'll be well over $100,000 plus installation, so you're probably gonna get just one park out of a, out of a grant application.
When you say the park, you mean playground equipment?
I mean playground equipment. So there's two at Lake June Park, one on the west side by the ball fields, and then one on the east side. So there's two of those playgrounds that are there, so.
So how will you, so we need to decide one or the other? You can't go in to say...
Yeah, I wasn't clear enough in my direction. So that's, you need to decide whether you want me to apply for a playground, whether you want me to apply for a splash pad, or whether you just wanna wait and try next year.
Oh, I don't wanna wait, I wanna try for something. Is it, do you think this is an annual? Cuz I was looking at the FRDAP website, and they, you know, I saw the whole thing about they're interested in trying to find areas for splash pads. And actually, they showed some pictures of a water splash pad, which was interesting, you know, and right in the lake, which I know brings all types of other questions on lifeguards and things like that. But that was in their last meeting presentation that, you know, they're looking for somebody, some town to come forward, you know, with some type, especially commit to it be open in the three summer months of a splash pad. But I'm equally, if nor more, myself, interested in getting the playgrounds up to the conditions that they should be in. And if they're not in an area where it's shaded, that we need the shades, because, you know, it gets to be hot, and then it doesn't get used because of the heat from the sun, you know, for the kids to use them. So I'm, I'm not gonna, do we have to make a motion in order to discuss it? That's what we have to do? I'm just gonna pass to my other council members on what their ideas of which priority we should go for. But I do think we should, if there's money out there, let's go for it.
So I'll make a motion for discussion, cuz you do have to make a motion.
Oh, motion for, okay, gotcha.
So I'll make a motion that we apply for a grant for the FRDAP playground. And my reasoning for that is we already have playgrounds, and we know they're successful. So let's go ahead and, and do the playgrounds, and have this hopefully to, to also be able to cover some sort of a, would also be able to pay for some sort of a cover for the playground.
Second that.
Okay, I, I, discussion?
I need...
You have to second it for discussion.
You second it? Okay. All right, so now we can discuss it?
So, I know there was a lot of interest in a splash park, but I think, oops.
I think although there was a lot of request for splash park, I think time-wise, efficiency-wise, is to go for the playground equipment now, and then have community involvement to figure out where they would like a splash park, and, and do that in the next go-round. But concentrate on the easiest thing right now is the playground equipment.
I agree, they need covers. I had this discussion with Mr. Ricardi, and he, he comes from an area where they did have covers, because the little children's skin's so tender, and in Florida, it's always hot, and they can't even use the equipment, so what's the point? But he said, "If the hurricanes come..." And we probably need to discuss that later, but if the hurricanes come, they take down the tarps, of course, so they don't blow away, and then they don't go back on until after hurricane season. So that's during the hot time. So I just wanted to point that out, because I had the same question, to put the tarps on. So maybe we need to be more aggressive putting them back on? I don't know. I just wanted to tell you guys that, that's wisdom here. Thank you.
And, and I'm fine with that. I, I also ask, though, Kevin, take a look to see if there's a chance for something with a splash park. Like I said, I went under the, I actually printed some pictures of it. I think I... I think I, and I'm like, oh, they're asking for people to sign up for this. So if we only have one opportunity for a grant, that's fine. But I'd like to know what this, we really want people to sign up for something, might be. Because I would ask for feedback on if there was an opportunity to do both, then what is our feeling on that?
I can assure you Dana will give me plenty of feedback on that.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
I said Dana will give me plenty of feedback on the splash park.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for, apply for the grant for a new park, new playground. Okay. Any other comments from the podium? Take it to the audience.
Ken LeBlanc, yeah, I'd just like to support, I mean, I think the town should always be making this town a more livable place. So parks, especially splash park, I think is something that's on a lot of people's minds. I think it makes sense, like you're saying, you know, it's, you know, maybe we need to plan for the splash park, and maybe you're looking for funding next year, because we've got to figure out where to put it and everything else. But I think it should be on the radar. I think a lot of people have wanted that for many years. I mean, I wish I had it when my kids could actually use it, but, you know, maybe grandkids can use it someday. But I think it's a great idea. And I'd like to mention the property behind Burt Harris's office there. Before you guys sell it off, maybe that's a place where a splash park could be, or a place for a dog park to be, or something like that, you know. So dog park's something that I've heard a lot of people would like to have in this town as well, so. But I think it's good that you're pursuing these things, and a splash park would be awesome if it comes by. All right.
Okay. Bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Eberhart?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Okay, well now go to D2D Pickleball Court in Lake Placid, June Park, RPAC request.
I'm going to bring this, I'll bring this up before we get into the RPAC request. So this will be for the August RPAC board meeting. This is a conceptual rendering of pavement. When I say pickleball court, we did get, we applied for and received a $200,000 grant for the pickleball courts. I, my request, I'll go to in a minute, but this is a conceptual design that has paving, parking. You'll see 83 spaces. We'll have to come back, or my intention is to come back to the LPA and the council to request that 50% of those stay as grass parking lots, grass parking spaces, and not paved parking spaces. But it ties into the original conceptual plan, Phase 2 of Lake June Park. So I'll bring that back up just for you to look at. But that's so very different than what you had seen originally, or a year ago, when you went out for the pickleball court. This is the Nitty Construction Cost Estimate. Nitty Construction is the leading manufacturer of pickleball courts in the area. They did Spring Lakes. Spring Lake is very happy with their, with their construction and what they did. The $229,000 estimate, you will see, is going to be higher than that when you look at our total cost estimates, because we did reduce the interior dividers from, that was in part of the original plan, to four-foot, which adds 8,300 to that, 229. And then we also added, for the design, the four cabanas, eight-foot-long cabanas in between the courts, for discussion. And so, ooh, that's not big enough. So this is our current cost estimate for the pickleball courts, paving, lighting of the pickleball courts, pretty much everything that's in that plan that we could come up with and do, so we could get it done at once. Total budget of, right at $700,000. I'm asking for a town match of $200,000, which matches the FRDAP grant, and the, and my request to RPAC would be for $299,000 as a contribution, if you approve the request. So that would be the RPAC funding request. We would go as far as we could with the paving, depending on where the, we believe we have good estimates. But they're just estimates, and depending on where this happens and when this happens, that everything changes, as we've known over the last couple of years. So it's open for discussion, and what you would like to approve or not approve, as far as the, I did not provide, and I probably should have, just the pickleball courts with nothing else, but without parking and without access to the pickleball courts, it didn't make a lot of, didn't make a lot of logical sense to me to put them out in the middle of the field without, without the rest of the costs. So I will add in, and I'm sure Councilmember Charles will jump in on this one, where it's shown, there was a question that she had discussed with me about keeping that area for kids to play in. You could shift the pickleball courts as flat section. You could shift them to the south, and slightly to the west, and still fit them in and protect some of that play area, and stay on the flat section. But then if you don't, if you go too far, you start running into that elevation, which runs up onto the soccer fields. So, open for discussion.
So do we have the FRDAP grant already? Do, that one's been approved? So till far, so far, we have the $200,000 was approved?
The $200,000 from the town is not approved.
No, town is not approved, I know that.
Yes, so the $200,000 FRDAP grant is approved. We'll receive that sometime this summer, I think, when the new budget goes into effect? Is there a timeline? I think, I'm not positive, but I think it goes into, it comes in with the new budget. So it'll be after July 1st.
We're putting in $200,000 because it's a matching grant?
No, that's, it is a partial matching grant. The 200, RPAC likes us to match 50%. It's been an argument back and forth over time, from what I understand. So, and it's also been the argument that we are a third the size of Avon Park, and Spring Lake, and Sun 'n' Lake, and Sebring, and therefore, our match should not be the 50% match that is typical for RPAC. I believe there has been some reception to that, and we're approaching this. So that was, the original grant requests, for those that had seen this earlier, I think our match was at 18%, and it was $77,000. I did raise that, but we're also doing quite a bit more with the parking area than was originally intended in that original request. So I may be a little aggressive, but I'd rather ask for more and get less than not ask for as much as we can get.
Our town administrator will be that person there fighting for the money, so he's our new guy. The RPAC people seem to be in favor of pickleball, because if they get enough of them, they could have a tournament here.
So this is for eight courts with lighting?
That's correct. You need eight courts in order to host a tournament, which is...
To host what?
To host a tournament. You need eight courts, which is why Spring Lake only put in six.
So, I mean, this was, a lot of the feedback was the location, you know, we can go back to the map, because where it's currently for these, it's a flat area in front of the pavilion that when the families have picnics, that's kind of a lot of the area that the kids will run around and play between there and going over to the playground. So that was a big concern, you know, there was questions on, is it really going to be used? Do we need eight of them? Should we start with four of them? So there was different, you know, and I actually looked, you know, Kevin, I don't know if this would even work, but it looks like it would to me, but over, off of Jackson Road between the ballparks is a nice, long, big, flat area, too, you know, because pickleball gets noisy, very noisy. You know, a lot of people, you know, those that like it, don't want it right next to their house because of the constant noise. A lot of people ask the question, in the summertime, is it really going to get used a lot? So there was a lot of feedback on, you know, at that time, it was 450,000, now we're talking 700,000. Is it really a top priority of the different other types of activities that people would like to see in the town?
I can tell you, from the feedback that I get on pickleball, I get really tired of pickleball, because I hear it a lot, but there are people in, I can think, I can tell you, Meadow Lake, Oak Island, heaven only knows where else, that are playing pickleball in earnest. And they are definitely looking for sites to play. In addition, you may not be aware, we took the shuffleboard courts out of downtown Lake Placid from Stewart Park, and at that time, we said to the public that we would put some other type of entertainment somewhere else. And this is kind of what came up at the same time. And so I feel like that's a nice trade-off, that we now can have this up-and-coming sport, which it truly is, up-and-coming sport, be out there at the park. And I don't think being outside is going to bother these people at all. They'll play early in the morning, they'll play late at night, especially if it's lighted. I don't think that will be an issue. And as far as the children playing, I get that, they've been accustomed to playing there. But children will play anywhere, they really will.
Yeah, my concern is you're taking away the line of sight from, you've got the pavilion where the families are having their picnics, and now you're, by putting the pickleball court there, you're pushing the children more towards the soccer field. So there's a lot of line of sight, too, that came up as concerns.
I'm sorry, where's the soccer field, on the bottom here?
Soccer field goes up towards Interlake.
Oh, please, I'm not good with...
He's not really showing it, so where all the, the words are... Yeah, down there. This is up here.
Why aren't they going this way? Why don't they go this way?
There's the pavilion and the play area there. Yeah, but these are just, these aren't bushes, these are trees.
There's room underneath, they can play there. Play in the traffic, no.
See, I think some of these things, especially if now we're talking $200,000 of town money to contribute, it'd be nice to have workshops to allow the public to come and give comments on us moving forward with, you know, this type of activity. A lot of towns do that. They put out to say, the town is looking at adding pickleball courts here. It's going to be X dollars, we're going to get grants from here, but we're going to have to contribute this. And to get that feedback on, is this really the best interest of the town's money? If it was all grant money, is where it used to be, right? It was pretty much all grant money. Now it's kind of flipped that we've got to kick in a lot more than we originally anticipated.
There was a great deal of discussion on pickleball courts before you came on council, and Mr. Wilson was very strong on pickleball courts. And I think you can go back probably a year or more. So yet again, I'm not against workshops in any way. However, it does delay the process, and we've already been a long time looking at the pickleball courts. But if we want to put yet another project back into reverse or neutral, we can.
Two or three comments on if you just want to do the pickleball courts with nothing else, and you're talking about a $400,000 project, still lighted with the pond, which is required. Depending on where you want to put it, if you put it on the west side, it's still going to be that same $400,000. You don't have access to, you don't have good access to restrooms on the other side. The other part of this is it ties to parking in for the Little League, which parks all over that area. All over this area, they also park on the other side, but the vast majority of people park in here during Little League games, and it also solves some of the issues with the boat ramp, because you're now paving this area. That's why it's a $700,000 request, and not a $400,000 request, because you're actually paving the road and creating, these will still be grass spots. And these will be grass spots, but you start creating that pavement area. So we're done with the potholes and the issues of some of that paved area. So it's a combination of multiple things for that area. Like I said, if you want to move it, then that's an option, that's just up for discussion. I just want to make those points, that it's, pickleball courts is still a $400,000 project, lighted with a pond. If you want to do paving as part of this project, then that's a $700,000 project.
Well, there's no question that the paving, the potholes by the boat ramp are pretty bad. Needs to be addressed.
I just need a motion and a direction before, and if you want to move this to June, it's fine. There's not a rush on that. But we need to have direction before we apply to RPAC, because I can't put an application into RPAC committing town funds without your approval and permission.
If someone that wants to speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, if I may, my name is Josephine Comley. And I have heard a lot about the pickleball courts in the last three years, okay? But I've never heard anything about the lift stations. But I have heard about the pickleball for three years, okay? But try to talk to a councilman on something else other than pickleball was very difficult on the outside of this building. I am a pickleball player. Here's my concern. Now that I'm getting your ideas and what you're thinking, you're hoping to bring in more, maybe tournaments, okay? What my thought is, I play pickleball at these different places. You have the Genesis Center, who offers to everyone, which is wonderful. It's not seven days a week, but it's play about five different times through the week. You have Sun 'n' Lake on 98, which is a very nice pickleball court, that's Sebring. You have Spring and, you have Sun 'n' Lake North, I'm sorry. Then you have Spring Lake on 98, very nice pickleball courts. Charlie Brown in Sebring, and you've got Sun 'n' Lake South. So you have quite a lot of pickleball courts. You only have one that has lighted. The one that has lighted courts are Charlie Brown. Now, I'm thinking, why don't we start small? Why don't we try four pickleball courts? And as a pickleball player, I can say to you, people do not want to play out in that heat, okay? Especially, you know, I know it's a big, active sport, and I love it, I think it's great. But I can't play out in that heat. I know a lot of people that can't. And they'll say, gee whiz, we put these pickleball courts in and nobody's using them. So why don't we try small? Why don't we try four pickleball courts? You know, it's a direction. And if we see it's so successful, let's expand. But when you have, and my understanding is, there's a development right behind Lake June Point on Catfish Road, that's going to put in multiple pickleball courts in their community, okay? They're going to be a private community. So I'm saying, we have all these pickleball courts, and I'm looking at what you're proposing. If all eight courts are used at, excuse me, at once, you're talking 32 players. I've not seen that, and I've been to several of these pickleball courts, okay? And then you have weather conditions. You have a lot of conditions with pickleball that you really don't get to play. But again, it's the biggest sport out there, it's wonderful, it's great. But I'm looking at the money aspect. Could we not put that money into something better for the town for right now, and work on building more pickleball courts? That's just a thought. Because you're just not going to get competition in here coming right away for eight pickleball courts, unless you have some big plans of bringing in, like I see, I see it in Naples, I see it at all different parts of the country. So why don't we start small? It doesn't hurt, because we have so many things on the stove right now, so many projects, so many grants out there. And to me, this is not a priority, because we have so many pickleball courts. But I don't want to, I mean, I want to go along with, hey, that's a great idea, start out with four. But that's just a thought. So it's not like, and I am tired of hearing about it. I hear you, okay? Because I'm a player for five years now, six years.
I'm a golf pro, it gets old.
So, anyway, thank you so much.
As I recall, when we started talking about this a long time ago, and here we are reinventing the wheel again, but there was some tourist development reason why we didn't want to build four courts, that we needed to build eight. Was it Casey Wall that told us we had to build eight, or needed to build eight to make it viable, or something?
I think the whole tournament, you needed more than four.
Right, and then, and then I heard something that for tournaments, you really need 12 or something.
Which brings more people in and more, you know...
Right, but if we can bring the tournaments, we can bring the tourist tax dollars.
Right, right.
So just a quick comment. The council made a decision to apply for, the grant was based on eight courts. So if you choose to build something less, you can turn down the grant, and we'll go on and move on to something else. and move on to something else.
They would probably pull our grant money.
They would, they would, yeah. Okay, thank you. I knew there was a reason somewhere. Thank you.
Pam Fentress. I'm one of the people that usually stays till the end, so I've heard my fair share of pickleball discussion over the years and years and years. And Councilmember Charlie Wilson would always, during his comments, talk about pickleball for 20, 30 minutes. So I appreciate revisiting certain things, but I think for the stability of the town, the staff, once something comes up before the council and it's voted on several times and they didn't, it's gone to a county level, there has to be some kind of process where we don't open it up again. And it's over, I don't play pickleball, but a lot of people love it. But we have, I mean, a lot of great ideas floating around there, but we, I would encourage you to move on. That's all I'll say. Thank you.
And I understand what you're saying, but this was all done with the old council. Now we've got new members and they've got different ideas. But I, I think we're kind of locked into what we got. So we're, I think we're pretty much going to have to stay there.
Ken LeBlanc. You know, I'd say since 2005, I've been driving through that park, dirt parking lot, wondering why it's not paved. So I think it's a great idea that it'll get paved in this project. It's about time. And, and I think, you know, I would build the eight courts and allow us to have tournaments, because that puts, you know, they say heads in beds, right? So then people stay in the hotels and people go to wet dogs and they go to the restaurants downtown and then it helps the businesses. So, you know, I don't think we have anything like that in Lake Placid right now. Sebring, you know, gets the benefit of their ball fields having tournaments all the time. You know, so I think it's, you know, it's good for us. We've got a lot of space out there, so I think we can make things happen. And I, I think this makes, you know, Lake Placid a more livable place. You know, the, the tennis courts at the high school, my kids go there all the time in the evening and play tennis. If there were pickleball courts, they'd go there all the time and play pickleball. And maybe I would, too, you know? But I, I think about the only person I know that does play pickleball. Everybody talks about it now, so a lot of people are playing pickleball and, okay.
Okay. All right, so.
Just quickly to Kevin, so, so again, the biggest thing I kept hearing was the location. Just pushing it back a little more towards the soccer fields, is that like a big deal to do? To, to kind of, you know, because you can see where the children's playground is, and then we're putting a park, paved parking right next to the play structure there. And then we've got the pickleball courts. And then again, you've got the pavilion up there. So if you kind of push that a little more east, because this is still just a conceptual design, you haven't gone out for where the pond's going to be and everything like that. I think there was a lot more that needed to get done.
We haven't begun engineering on it until you had approval. So just an engineering estimate. So yes, you could shift that, I believe, south.
It's still a lot flat there, right? It goes a lot flat and then it starts going uphill where the soccer field is.
So I, I believe you can provide some space in between the pavilion or adjacent to the pavilion, kind of under that tree. The parking for the playground was intentional. That can shift and go, you know, so depending on where you're at, but the, but you could easily shift the pickleball courts to the, to the south. That's correct direction, I think it is. To the south, to the bottom of the page, and then provide some space there. And that would be, really, that would probably be up to Polston to look at that and on the elevations and see where you get, depends on your film, but I don't see any issue with that.
The, the item on the agenda tonight is to prove whether or not to apply for a grant. We can always fine tune the layout later, correct? This is just to apply for the grant?
Well, this is the RPAC, which is their part of the matching. I guess you want to consider to grant from the county, that would be correct. And they have to approve it before we'll actually start design.
So there's a chance to tweak the design later?
Correct. We could actually come back with a revised drawing, which will still not be a final drawing, until they do the engineering and size of the ponds. This is a conceptual plan.
So this is the grant and committing us to 200,000 potential?
That's correct. 200,000 from county, county reserves, 200,000 for that grant, which you've already received, and then the request to RPAC. RPAC may come back and say, we're not going to give you 380,000, but we'll give you 200 and we can come back to the council, or we can reduce paving and pave the section, which was part of the original, and pave the section up here, up here around the boat ramp and hold this off for a later date, depending on what the funding is. If they fund all of it, we anticipate that we will do all of the road paving along here and approximately half of the parking spaces, so.
And is there any opportunity anywhere else to get grants? Because I, I agree with Mr. LeBlanc. I mean, that dirt, you know, it's not even even there. You know, for that showcase park, having it paved would be the thing to do. I mean, I had even mentioned to Kevin, I would like to see the road continued between Jackson Road and, you know, along the backside to be able to connect. You know, if you're coming from Placid Lakes area and you want to get to the park, you know, there's a half road there behind the park, you can't even drive from one side to the other. It's never been finished. But that's a story for another day, I guess. But so is there any other opportunity to continue to look to see if there's any type of grants for the, whatever we're going to get saddled with?
I don't know of anywhere else that you're going to get a partial grant for this. Road grants are tough to get. It's usually based on the recreational facility. And then that's part of your match and part of what you're doing is putting the roads in and that infrastructure to accommodate that. So there may be something out there, I'm just not familiar with it.
Yeah, I'm just thinking federal or something, because we've now got Florida, we've got county, so there's some federal money or something.
There may be, I just haven't seen it.
What is the opportunity for us to table this till the next meeting? Are we going to miss a RUPAC meeting if we do that?
No, it's, it's in August.
Could we table this for the next meeting?
Sure.
You make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to table this item till the next meeting. And that way we can maybe get some better input on pickleball players and, as to how we have gotten here in the first place.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second. Any other discussion? Take it, the audience. Hold the council, please.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Last thing on the agenda is Lake June Fish and Wildlife Commission, planning of aquatic plants.
Actually, there's a couple more items, but, yes. That is a, just an information update. Fish and Wildlife has been approved to plant 20,000. Funding has been approved for them to plant 20,000 plants along Lake June Scrub Park. So you will see that, I don't have a timeline yet from the county of Fish and Wildlife, but that will be happening and it should help. So another step in your multi-phase approach to doing something to approve Lake June. So that was that one. My walk-on item is 151 Dale Hall property, Bicentennial Park. You had previously approved $290,000 to purchase that property. It has sold to E. Brock Realty. She is willing to sell it to us for 300,000. I wasn't going to add the 10,000, even 10,000's within my spending authority, but I'm not going to add that 10,000 and say, yes, we'll make an offer on it. So I want council direction. There is, I don't have all of the answers, so my question would be contingent upon approval by the attorney that's handling that real estate transaction, which is Roberto Solea. The reason we didn't close on that originally is there's a title issue. And there was a question about title insurance because of that title issue. We now have a second seller that has been sold. Eve Brock has title insurance, so we anticipate that we could get title insurance. There is still a risk. What I couldn't get answered from Mr. Solea was how great a risk, who could possibly come back and make a claim on that property if we purchased it? So there is a, there is a risk associated with the property. I'm not 100% sure of what that risk is. We could not file a claim, according to him, because we had no contract, we had no right to file a claim, so we weren't part of the property, even though we have leased that property for a long, long time. But I wanted to be fully clear, there is a risk if you approve purchasing that property, that somebody may be able to come back in the future, I don't know who, and make a claim on that property, so. But I would direct direction if we want to maintain that park, Bicentennial Park, it does include the building. We have talked about it in the past, I did not bring the drawing with me, I thought I did. Talked about it when we originally were looking at purchasing that, that we'd have the building and be available for birthday parties and small events. And we could also put about approximately 20 parking spaces on there without eliminating the park. So I want to put that out there for council discussion to, as to whether to move forward. She was not inclined to wait a month, she wants to, she's planning on moving her real estate office into there. And she was not willing to accept the 290,000 that I had been previously authorized to offer. So that's why it's back up on tonight's agenda for the additional 10,000, if you are still inclined to pursue purchasing that property or not.
So now they want more for the property than what we offered?
Well, it's a second seller. She's already, the original owner sold the property to Eve Brock. Now Eve Brock has closed on the property, had closing costs and expenses, and so she's not willing to sell it for the same price.
How big is the building on there?
I don't have the square footage of the building. I've been in it, walked through it, it's been completely remodeled. Estimate about 1,500 square feet. It's two large rooms, a bathroom, a kitchen, two bathrooms, two large bedrooms, I guess what I would call are two large rooms, not, so one was probably the living room, one was probably the bedroom. There's two bathrooms, at least one of which would have to be remodeled to a handicap bathroom. So there would be some expense at some point moving forward to get that handicap. Ken, do you remember how big that building was? Okay. It's, it's a block and a half from Journal Plaza. To me, it's a great location for the park, particularly if it was some irrigation and tied into that building. We had a similar park situation in Cluiston, we rent it out for birthday parties all the time, the building. They have a place to go inside, use the bathroom, go use the park. You could get dinner at one of the restaurants in town, come back, block and a half, you got 20 parking spots, kids have a place to play. So that's my interest in the park. It's, like I said, another asset for the town if you're so inclined, but.
And then what condition is the building? Just thinking of future maintenance and upkeep and repairs?
The building was recently renovated, so the building is in very good condition. Flooring, it's all been painted, it's actually in, I was very surprised, it's in very good shape.
It was used by the Boy Scouts for years.
Yeah, but Mr. Gissendanner had remodeled the building recently, so in the last four or five years, I would say.
Last one year.
Oh, last one year. So very recently renovated. It's a, it's a, it's within the CRA, you could see, use CRA funds to do the parking areas. You could also use CRA funds if you were so inclined to put the playground equipment that we had to remove because of the age back on that property. So logically, it makes a world of sense for that neighborhood and for that area, to me. And, but again, there is some risk that I think is relatively minor, but I'm not the attorney looking at that, so.
Yeah, if I could speak to this, Ken LeBlanc. So I, I think it's, like you said, it's in a good location, the building itself, while it's not much to look at, I think, you know, probably you put a outside covered area on that so people could sit on, you know, while their kids are playing, they could be sitting in, underneath the roof. It's a great place for birthday parties. It's, you know, we had talked maybe, you know, and I think in Cluiston, they, they had a similar situation, they would rent it out for daycare or something like that. It's got a lot of opportunities and options, but, you know, once it gets bought and turned into something else, you'll never get that opportunity again. It's been a playground for, I don't know, longer than I've been here. And it just seems to be like a good location for that. And like I said, it's in the CRA district, so maybe it becomes CRA project. But as development, and there's a lot of development that's going to happen around there, more, you know, residential and things like that, it's, it's, you know, in a good central location, all of that, so. I think, I think it was a good plan for the town to buy that property. And if you're going to have to buy it for 10,000 more than you had to buy it before, that's not that big a deal, you know, in my mind, right? So especially if you got the funds set aside for it already, so. I think it'll be worthwhile for the town. It'll be making the town a more livable place.
And walkable.
I have the square footage, it's 1,420 square feet. There's four lots, 65 by 126, so that's the size of the property. It was built in 1965, and it does appear to have central air.
So fiscal impacts 300,000?
1,420 square feet was.
No.
She's asking, it's 300,000, 300,000 plus closing costs, so it's, yes.
And where would that come from?
It's also going to come from the R. Infrastructure Fund.
Infrastructure? We have money?
2.1 million dollars in there currently.
Okay. No, I agree. I, I like the location, I like the great opportunities, whether it's for parties or five, 10 years from now, a recreation department, I mean, the, the park sitting right there, so central, so I'll go ahead and make a motion that we move forward to purchase, what's the address?
151 Dale Hall.
151?
Yes.
Dale Hall. But with the caveat that the title risk, that our town attorney is comfortable with whatever risk can be, you know, mitigated. Can I make that in a motion like that? That would be my scare, when you said there's a risk associated with it.
I have had to recuse myself from that issue because I represented Mr. Gissendanner in the past and his daughter. They have now sold the property to Eve Brock, so that conflict, I believe, has gone. Now, that said, we've already paid Roberto to come up to speed on that. Let, he or I'll have a conversation with Roberto and let's see and, and we'll figure it out. Is that close enough?
Yeah. I mean, I'd like to proceed, that's my only concern, is to make sure that we can mitigate the risk to the town.
I agree with what he said. Any risk should be minimal, from what I know, but Roberto has done the deeper dive into this. So if you'd let us, I guess your motion is fine.
Okay.
Sorry.
Second.
Okay, she seconded.
I'll just say that it's on the property records, although they're two or three weeks behind, it's still in Dr. Gissendanner's name.
It's still in Disson Glaner's name, but they're two or three weeks behind, I know that, at the courthouse, so. We just, yeah, just make sure what's, what's going on with the title.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion from anybody? Hold the council.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Okay. And last for me, but we, we skipped over the pipe bursting project update, so I'll do that update real quick. The, we had a pre-construction meeting with the contractor, that's the pipe bursting project on Inner Lake from 27 to Main. They once again have delayed the start of that construction, it will start on August 19th. That's mobilization. None of the pipe bursting will actually take place until the beginning of October. It'll run through December 19th or 20th, which is about the end of our rant. They can't delay it any longer, we're going to lose that CDBG grant. But they did ask and we gave them tentative permission, they would like to do most of that pipe bursting at night, so they don't affect any of the businesses during the day. So they will be at the locations, they do about 300 feet at a time. So at that 300-foot mark, there will be excavations, so, but they want to impact the business owners as little as possible when they're doing that project. We don't have, until they get into a lot more of it, we won't have any exact dates, but that's, that was their request, it doesn't change the price at all, but they would do the, most of the pipe bursting at night. So that's the update on the pipe bursting project. We'll have more as we move. We'll have more as we move forward and get closer to, to them actually starting work.
If I may, the, I believe Sherion raised the question about not getting landscaping done on that side of the street or in some of the areas. That's one of the reasons. We're waiting until, thank you, the pipe bursting is done because it's a transite pipe, Do you have something? Well, go ahead. I'll let you go first. Then we'll finish up.
My question is for Kevin. Can you give us an update on the status of the wastewater treatment plant contract as far as you were going to be looking at possible value engineering or maybe the city doing some of the demolition work or, you know, things like that?
Can you state your name and address, please, for the record?
I'm sorry. Jack Comley, 607 Sunset Point Drive.
Yes, we got their proposed reductions in scope at the, I believe it was Wednesday, last Wednesday. Extremely disappointed in their recommendations and what they were willing to provide to us, and they chose, they do not want to participate in owner-direct purchases. So right now we have about $400,000 or $500,000 that were, is their maximum reductions in their scope of work. Their statement to us is they already saved us $7 million or $6 million by being the low bid, which is not an adequate response. It is setting the tone of the way the construction project will be, which they're not going to like. I've had a fair amount of experience in this. They're not going to like me much, but that's okay. But very disappointed in their comeback on the, on the reductions in scope. We have not signed a contract. We're still, we're scheduled a meeting with the engineer, Penone, tomorrow to go over those and discuss and try and come up with a game plan before we're going to sign any contract.
And the original, their original bid was like 32-point some million?
34,519,000 or something in that neighborhood. So.
And just one more question then. The design engineers for the project, they are also going to be the construction manager?
Has yet to be determined.
Okay. I would strongly recommend that you hire somebody else as a construction manager. That way, the company that you hire would be looking out for our interests. When you, I've worked in construction management for many years, right? And if, if you have the design engineer as the construction manager, they're looking out for themselves first and the owner second.
We're waiting for a proposal from a engineering firm that is not the design engineer.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Noel, I apologize. Your paper got lost in my paperwork. Should have had you come up a long time ago. I apologize.
No trouble. Michael Noel, 74 Lake June Road. My wife and I also own a couple businesses downtown in the Journal Plaza. So I was looking for an update on the status of the service road that runs behind the Journal Plaza, approximately from Bellevue up to about Dahl Hall. I understand some CRA funds are dedicated toward that repaving. Just wanted to understand the scope of it, so I can stay within my three minutes.
The, so I wish I had a date certain. Excavation Point, Talrein Court. I don't know if you're familiar with him or not. They were issued the purchase order, I believe, in January. Might have been the end of January or early February.
I was less concerned with the timeframe than the scope of the work, to understand whether they were going to pave the full 18-foot right-of-way as wide as possible. And I can elaborate on, elaborate on why I would suggest that.
I will get him and I will contact you and we'll let you know and give you an update on that project.
Yeah, some, some quick history, because I haven't fed my wife yet, so we can't stay much longer, anyway. But I've had a couple of conversations with Scott Ogul. He's the operations manager for Sugar that runs a Sugar Express. And they are going to double the siding out to the bridge at John Smoke, and they want to extend their boardwalk for viewing of the locomotive when it's in station. They've also purchased, and to my understanding, I think they might have already finished the renovation, to increase their capacity from 200 to 400 passengers. So the train will extend quite a bit further down the track. The right-of-way that the town has runs from essentially the depot all the way out to almost Dahl Hall. So it would be a great opportunity forward-looking to pave it as wide as possible, so that potentially there could be parking there. Sugar's expressed a willingness to contemplate putting a path through there with historical signs alongside that property and right-of-way. So it would be a real opportunity to promote that train traffic and we could make a nice designated loop where people could find their way all around our beautiful little town.
I can tell you that it does not anticipate paving the section between the depot and the next road. That's not, there's no road there. We own right-of-way, but there's no road there, so it does not anticipate that piece of it. We've also been in conversations with Sugar Express on a railroad turntable, and so we were waiting on, actually, it's in their court now as to what they would do. They do own the cars to increase their capacity. And so we're waiting on an estimate from them and then pursuing grants and a cooperative discussion with, with Scott. So we have had those meetings from town staff.
There is another local township that's trying to court them to bring the turntable elsewhere.
We're familiar.
Okay. So just to that extent, of course, they want to put in a park with more parking, so it would be, I think, to the town's great advantage to maybe contemplate taking that road a little bit further to the depot and as far as north as you possibly could.
I hope I have an advantage in that President of US Sugar is my backdoor neighbor, so.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
All right, I'll take it to my department heads. Anybody have anything? Everybody shaking their head no? Okay, we'll bring it back to the podium. We'll start down here.
I would just like to thank people from attending, people for attending the meetings and really to the businesses. Your input into the decisions that we're faced with and just the vision of the future is so important, so I really appreciate the comments.
I appreciate the support of the council to move forward with the police station where it is now. I consider that an issue that we don't have to bring up and discuss again. And, and we can move forward. And I see that there are a lot of things that we need to do as a council. But one of the things I think we need not to do is to redo things that have already done. Let's move forward. If something's already been decided, it's been decided. Move forward. And I thank you for the police department.
Deborah?
I just thank everybody for hanging in there. I know for everybody, it's been a really long day, so thank you very much.
Ditto on hanging in there. Thank you.
Mr. Attorney?
Not a word.
Does anybody have anything to come before Town Council? If not, meeting adjourned.